All right, ladies and gentlemen, I am going to call to order the May 1st, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we, it looks like we've got a relatively big agenda here tonight, so we will get right to it.
Mr. Chair, just to note, we have a full house here.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. We're going to start with administrative board work. Do we have approval of the April 10th, 2024 meeting minutes?
So move, Mr. Chair. Second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Art. Second, um, second by Lynn.
I have an amendment.
Absolutely.
Starting on line 267, and I'll follow up.
Read that, pass it on.
With a, with the actual verbiage, I'd like to add, in Jay.Penta further discussed the impact of this PUD and its impact on schools, inquired about the results of the comparison study conducted by the applicant of similar and recent Londonderry properties.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions on it? Want to add that to your motion?
I will add that to my motion.
Fantastic.
We've amended the minutes as presented, and I'll second that amendment.
Fantastic. So I've got a motion by Art, second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Any abstentions?
One.
One abstention from Chad. We are all set. Regional impact determinations, it doesn't look like we have any. So I'll keep moving on that. And then discussions with town staff. Kelly?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
John?
Nothing this evening.
Fantastic. I do know that we've got one regional impact letter received from the city of Manchester. It's in the read file. If anybody would like to read it. Moving on here. Going to get into old business. We're going to start with a public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan for a 96-unit multifamily residential development and associated site improvements in the multifamily residential R3 District, 35 Gilcrest Road, Tax Map 7, Lot 118. Gilcrest Realty Holdings LLC is the owner and applicant, and this has been continued from both March 6th and April 3rd, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff recommends that the board vote to accept the application as it is substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction and to allow the board to make an informed decision.
Fantastic. I am looking for a motion to accept the application as complete.
Mr. Chair, I will move that the application is complete, per staff's recommendation.
A motion by Art, second by Jason, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we will move forward.
Yes, section 65, we can.
Yeah, I know, we technically don't have to read that, so I'm not too, too worried about that. So if the applicant could come up, I'd like you to introduce yourselves, so we can, we can get going on this.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Joseph Maynard. My company's name is Benchmark LLC, and I'm here on behalf of Gilcrest Realty Holdings LLC. The managers of Gilcrest Holding are here. We also have our traffic consultant with us, and we can answer any questions when we get to that part of this. So when we look at this piece of property, it's along Gilcrest Road. It's known as Tax Map 7, Lot 118. The lot's 21.2 acres, and it has about 1,457 feet of frontage along Gilcrest Road. Currently, the lot is developed with an old apple orchard that hasn't been maintained since around 2006. The orchard's heavily overgrown with thick vine growth and the apple trees that have filled in throughout that land. Prior to the apple orchard, around 1970, prior to that, the land was some sort of a row crop, farmland that was used for that purpose. When we look at this proposal, we're looking to develop this land as 96 townhouses. Each building will have a two-car garage, parking for a minimum of two cars in each driveway. There are also a couple of small additional parking areas that we're proposing as just remote overflow type of things. A small park area is also proposed on the project. It includes a sports court, an outside play area, and some parking for people that choose the drive to that area instead of walking through one of the paths that we're creating to get to this area. Ultimately, there's three roads that we're looking to build to get access into this. Two of those access roads will have Gilcrest Road curb cuts to get into the property. The third road is a connector between those two side streets that'll go into this. All of the lots are proposed to be serviced by the municipal sewer, Penn and Chuck water, and gas services. When we look at our project in general, ultimately, we'd like to construct this in three phases. Phase one, which is Elise Road, that road is the most northeast one that's on the property, or the one closest to the Home Depot side of this. Elise Road is our primary road where that, at the end of that road is a detention pond. That detention pond will ultimately take all of the runoff from all of the phases, and makes sense to build it as part of the first phase, so that it can be, become well-established, and therefore, when the other phases are built, they just have to connect into that side of things. The sewer pump station that we're looking to construct is also in that phase, so all of the sewer laterals would be run down to that section. The second phase out of this project would be the second road out to Gilcrest. That's at the north, north side going about, across from the cemetery or Boston Ave. Also, in addition to that road, when that is being constructed, the outside sports courts and playground area would also be built. The third phase of the final one is actually the connector road that goes between the two of the two previous roads, and therefore, it just makes sense to build that at the last portion of this. So when we look at our road grades, primarily, all of the roads have a grade between 1 and 3/4 to 5%, so it's a very gently, gentle sloping land. There are some waivers that we're asking for as part of this application. The first one deals with the exemption from phasing. So this is a 96-townhouse project. The land is in the R3 zone. R3 has a limit of three multifamily buildings per year. I think that the R3, when they said multi, multifamily buildings, was more of the apartment building type of situation, with 16 or 20 lot, 20 units in a building. In this case, they're townhouse style, so ultimately, we'll have more than three buildings constructed in one year. We're looking for a cap of 48, so that would ultimately be a two-year build-out, even though I think it'll take longer to do that, but my client has asked for 48 units per year as part of this application. When we look at the subdivision regs, we have a waiver to sidewalks. When we were in for preliminary discussions with the board, we spoke about our desire not to have sidewalks within the project. The plan represents that. The second request deals with the driveways, so typical to some of the other projects my client has done in town. Instead of doing the 12-foot driveway with the flares at the end, we're looking to do a 22-foot driveway from the garage down to the street. The next one deals with the exhibits of D2 and D3, which is the minimum site distance criteria. So primarily, the internal roads that are within this, we're asking for a waiver to allow 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, which will reduce our sightline requirements for the proposed driveways within the project. The next one is the design speed, so those two kind of go hand in hand. When we look at the site plan regulations, again, site plans have sidewalks, so we're asking for that waiver. We have a waiver for planning board signature blocks. There's a couple that we weren't able to put in the recommended location. And the last one that we have deals with the onsite improvements. So primarily, the town has a requirement that says that we have to finish our roads and put the finished pavement down before we can get any certificates of occupancy. So in this case, and in the case of the other projects we've constructed in town, we've asked for this waiver to this requirement to not put the finished coat of pavement down and just do the binder in the initial layout, and that way, we can close on units, and then at the very end, once the equipment's done running over the roads, we can put the finished coat down. A bond would be placed in for that purpose. So in general, it's the same plan that's been going through this board for a while now. We went to Heritage Commission, they reviewed our, our building design, we made some edits and went back to them. They had no issues with the latest plan. I think there was a recommendation given to the board for that. I can answer any questions that you might have about the project?
Joe, did you go through your waiver for your number of units?
I did. It was the very first waiver request.
That was the first one. We've gone through that.
For 48 units in a year, so.
Yep. Well, before we go much further, I think I'm going to come to the board, see if we have any input on any other waivers. As well as, I'll go to staff after. Does anybody have any questions on the waivers themselves?
Number three I have is definition of limited. Could that be defined more specifically?
So number three, the third waiver deals with the site distance requirement. So the site distance requirement, as it stands, is based on-
No, 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 it's like distance, the sidewalks.
Oh, the sidewalks.
Applicant has requested a waiver from LSR 3.09G to only provide limited sidewalks.
Correct. So we, when we came in with this in a preliminary situation, we spoke to the fact that we weren't a big fan of constructing sidewalks within the project. Primarily, what we've encountered is the, the roads are designed at 28 feet wide. It's a, it's pretty much a Londonderry standard. Fire department prefers the 28-foot wide roads. In general, that width allows for people to walk down the side of the road. When we start having projects like these townhouses or the 55 and older developments, when you do a sidewalk, ultimately, you end up with a lot of tip downs and back up and tip downs and back up, so it's not a regular flat grade. So our experience has been that most people don't utilize the sidewalk. They walk in the gutter line of the street, which is at a, at a consistent slope with the road. So we had said at our conceptual meeting a year ago that that's what we were going to be requesting. We pulled the board. I know it wasn't a formal situation, but it was our understanding from that, that it was a good chance we could ask for the waiver.
Actually, they asked you for no sidewalks.
No sidewalks. So we have one walkway that connects our street system up to the sports court, but that's in, it's, it's more of a walkway, not a sidewalk, so.
Anybody getting any questions on the waivers?
So just another, just a follow-up question on the sidewalks. So the roads are granite curbed?
No, Cape Cod berm.
Which is?
Asphalt berm.
Asphalt, okay.
Yeah, so. Yeah, it's a closed drainage system, typical of many of the roads in town. Everything is plumbed to the detention pond at the back of the site.
Like to go to staff real quick, see if you have any comments on what we've discussed.
Are you going to go on to the waivers? Jake, I would suggest again that the applicant present is a traffic analysis.
Yeah, of course.
At this point, just so that everything's-
Absolutely, absolutely. So with that, they don't see anything on waivers. We can move on a little bit here and start.
And you can, can you confirm that the roads are going to be private roads?
Yes, the roads will be private roads.
Just a second. Could I ask a question on the applicant?
Yeah, of course.
What is the name of the development?
Juniper Ridge. I knew, I knew that.
Okay, because I thought I saw Lincoln Park.
Lincoln Park was what they were calling the park area.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Juniper Ridge was the, the name of the development.
Where did that name come about? I'm just curious, because you're, it's an apple orchard.
Yeah, I know. I, we toyed with a lot of different names, and that's what was finally settled upon.
Okay, that's fine. Just curious. I'm all set.
Not a problem. So to John's point, if we could talk a little bit about traffic and-
Sure.
Talk about your study here.
Yeah, so I have Kim Hazavati, and he's our traffic consultant, and Kim can talk.
We got two Kims in the room tonight.
A lot more intelligently about this than I can.
So Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just as a little background, so again, when they had come to the board, the board had asked that this project, at 35 Gilcrest, and the other one is at 52, kind of joint forces and look at the overall traffic out there. So their project was 96 units. The 50, 52 Gilcrest Road is an additional 67 units. So when you run those numbers, again, the preliminary numbers, it exceeds, or again, it falls into the category that they need a full traffic analysis. So within our regulations, it spells out what they need to do. Traffic counts, they meet with staff, determine the intersections that they need to look at, and when we're calling out the intersections they need to look at, obviously, the traffic dilutes. Comes out of the, out of the development, either going left or going right. So real simplistically, right, 50 is going left, 50 is going right. Get to the next intersection, some are going straight, some are going left, some are going right. So that's kind of how they, how we look at this, just as a background, but it's a little more, it's, it's the Reader's Digest version of what they looked at. Kim, I'd like to take it away. Also, we have Hoyle Tanner, our consultant, that did, did the review of the, the full traffic analysis is in the audience as well, so.
Who's that?
Question.
Thank you.
Steven J.
All right, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Kim Hazavati, and I'm a traffic engineer with Tep LLC. We worked in coordination with Howard Stein Hudson on the traffic impact and access study. A couple of questions, and this goes to what Mr. Trotter, you said about trip generation. The traffic study analyzes both projects together and their impacts as one project. Our, our project, our 96 units generates 47 vehicle trips in the morning peak hour and 54 during the afternoon peak hour, and that's less than 100. And ordinarily, quite often, we do a memorandum as opposed to a full study. But in this case, the two projects were combined. We met with town staff, and we set the scope, and there were at least seven intersections studied, and I'll just quickly buzz through the list. One would be the signalized intersection of Nashville Road and Gilcrest. Then we moved down Gilcrest and under the existing and no-build conditions, we looked at the Gilcrest intersection with Albany Avenue and Boston Avenue. Under the build conditions, we added the driveway intersections for the two developments. We analyzed the multiway stop intersection at Kendall Pond Road in Gilcrest. Then we went southwest down South Road and looked at the Kendall Pond Road intersection east of Beaverbrook and the South Road Kendall Pond Road intersection west of Beaverbrook. We looked at the weekday AM and PMP cars, which is typical for residential development. We analyzed 2024 existing conditions, 2027 no-build conditions, with, without the project, 2027 build conditions with the project's traffic, or with the combined two projects' traffic, 2037 no-build with background traffic growth, but without the project's traffic, and 2037 build with the project's traffic. We conducted traffic counts on weekday between 7:00 and 9:00 AM and 3:00 to 6:00 PM, and we derived our existing conditions based off of, off of those numbers, adjusted to peak month. We incorporated a background growth rate, 1% a year, to get us out to 2027 and 2037, and we considered three projects in the area as specific background growth projects. The traffic study included capacity analysis of the intersections in the, in the study area, and I'm just going to quickly highlight what's going on there. In, in traffic engineering parlance, there are basically, there are six levels of service. They're given letter designations, and level of service A is the highest level of service, level of service F is the lowest level of service, and those definitions are based on a delay per vehicle at the intersections. So level of service A corresponds to lowest delay, level of service F corresponds to the highest delay. Level of service F is not officially considered failure, is just being over a certain level. For example, at a signalized intersection, I believe that level is 80 seconds. I look at levels of service in terms of low delays, moderate delays, and delayed operations. Low delays would be level of service A and B. Moderate delays, levels of service C and D, and delayed operations E and F. The capacity analysis results are summarized in the traffic impact study on a series of tables toward the end, and I'm just going to actually go to those for my own reference. Okay, table eight. Table nine. Table 10 and table 11 include all of the analysis. And for the most part, we're looking at low levels of service in the study area. I will point out two specific locations where we'll look a little more closely. One would be the signalized intersection of Nashville Road and Gilcrest. And at that intersection, the overall intersection level of service, that's the overall, is level of service D under the various 2027 and 2037 conditions. And just comparing the increase in delay attributable, attributable to the two combined projects, for both the AM and PMP hours, it is within about a four to five-second increase due to the combined projects. So it's not a 10-second increase, it's not, not a 20-second increase, it's a four to five-second increase in average delay per vehicle approaching the intersection due to the two projects combined. The other location is the, that I want to talk about is the intersection of Gilcrest South and Kendall Pond. That's the other end of Gilcrest. At that location, we have, in the AM peak hour, low to moderate delays, and let me just actually pull those off myself here.
What was that intersection again, sir?
It's Gilcrest, Kendall Pond, and South.
Thank you.
And at that intersection for the AM peak hour, we're looking at low to moderate delays, and that goes all the way out to 2037, I believe. Let me double-check that. Yes, it does. And I believe the PMP hour, though, we show a lower level of service situation. The Gilcrest Road southbound approach, and that's a multiway stop intersection again, shows under the under the 27, 2027 no-build condition, it shows a actually, for the AM peak hour, low to moderate delays, and for the PMP hour, we're looking at under the existing condition in 2024, a level of service F with 66 seconds of delay. Then, under the no-build condition, again, this is for the PMP hour, level of service F with 87.1 seconds of delay. So the delay goes up from 66 to 87 seconds, but that's due to background traffic growth, not the traffic from the projects. And then the 2027 build condition shows level of service F with 91 seconds of delay, 91.1 seconds. So the summary result there is that the combined two projects increased delay a calculated four seconds at that, on that approach. The other approaches show better, better levels of service. They either show a level of service C to D or E, but the delays due to the project are small, the increase in delay. Bottom line, that southbounders approach, we really want to look at, because that's the one where the level of service is the lowest. Now let's look out at 2037, at that same approach. The whole intersection is showing lower levels of service in 2037 than in 2027, obviously, and that's due to 10 more years of background traffic growth. And just focusing in on that Gilcrest Road southbound approach, under the no-build condition, that's 2037 PMP hour without the projects, 144.5 seconds of delay. And for 2037 build, that is with the two combined projects added, 149.1 seconds of delay. So we're talking about a four-second increase in delay. And the other movements show lesser increases due to the project. Now, I gave you delays calculated to a decimal point. That is something that I want to stress is not really a practical result. These traffic impact studies involve projections out to 10 years. The traffic volumes vary from day to day. We're, we're looking at a further adjustment to peak month. Other adjustments are built in. And, and really, you can't expect that much precision. That's, when, when people see that kind of a detail, they shouldn't think that that's really how things are. I would look at traffic studies more in terms of what I described before. Low delays, moderate delays to delayed operations. The bottom-line result is, if you combine the two projects together, the impact to overall operations in the study area is, is limited. Four seconds to five seconds of delay added overall at the Gilcrest Road Nashville Road signal.
That's per vehicle?
Per, average per vehicle, yep.
Which per vehicle?
So if the average vehicle waits 45 seconds now, let's say as an example, the average vehicle will go up to 49 seconds. And, and the same, similar increase happens at the other end of Gilcrest. About four seconds increase added delay due to the project.
How many additional cars per hour?
The two projects together, during the AM peak hour, generate a grand total of 79 vehicle trips, 20 in and 59 out. If you break it out into the two separate projects, the one we're looking at tonight, the 96 units, is 47 vehicle trips, 12 in, 35 out. And the project across the street is 60, is, the 67 units is 32 vehicle trips, 8 in and 24 out. Then for the PMP hour, the grand total is 101 trips, 59 in and 42 out. The project we're looking at tonight, the 96 units, 54 trips, 32 of those in and 22 of those out. The project across the street, so to speak, the 67 units, 39 trips, 23 trips in and 16 trips out.
You had said something about, you helped me out on it, background traffic.
Right.
What, what exactly did you say? And can you explain to the board what that is?
Okay, that would be between now and either 2027 or 2037, and we looked at both of them. We're estimating traffic increases regardless of the, of the projects under review tonight. And we used a 1% growth rate that was verified by looking at data around the area. And two projects on Gilcrest, two residential projects going in, I believe we also looked at a bank going in on Gilcrest near Nashville Road.
Board, have any questions so far?
Yeah, just a quick question. So the existing traffic, did that take into account the new development down at the corner of South and Gilcrest? I don't believe that's occupied yet.
I believe it's Sheffield Estates.
Yes.
Yeah.
Subdivision down there.
So.
I don't believe that's occupied yet. I'm not sure if there's any that are occupied, but.
Is this traffic study including fully occupied over at the Sheffield Estate subdivision?
Yes.
Is that helpful?
Yep.
What did you say your PMP hours were, traffic were for the 96 units?
It is 54 vehicle trips. 32 in and 22 out. And let me explain that a little more. It's 96 units, and it's 54 trips. Those 54 trips are the, are the trips happening in one hour. There might be other trips on shoulder hours that surround that hour, too.
Okay, so only, your, your, your study has indicated there's only 54 of those units coming out in the peak hours in the AM and the PM?
Well, 47 in the AM and 54 in the PM. And the way we derive the trip generation was we, we use the professional standard method of the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Manual. And that manual includes equations and rates to calculate trip generation based on data collected at actual sites. So it's based on real-world data. And the hour that we calculate is the street peak hour, the busiest hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, and in this case, 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. And that's what we base our analysis on. We look at when the roads are busiest, and, and that's, that's when it is. So there are 96 units, and 47 of the trips from those units would happen during the morning street peak hour, and 54 of the trips from those units, to and from those units, would happen during the PM street peak hour. And then at other times of the day, there'd be other traffic, but the combined total of traffic in the area is less, so we, we believe capture the critical times. of traffic in the area is less, so we believe capture the critical times.
Is the study, are you just looking from Monday through Friday? Can you walk me through how it includes weakened traffic patterns?
We looked at Monday through Friday, and that is standard practice for residential development because...
Even though that residential, I'm sorry, even though that residential development abuts commercial?
Yes. Generally, we would look at...
The supermarket and the Home Depot, that's in that area.
If we were doing a retail project, then we would look at the weekend. For example, on a supermarket, if we're doing a traffic study for a supermarket, that supermarket's going to generate probably at least as much, probably more traffic during the Saturday site peak hour than during the weekday PM peak hour. So in that case, we look at it. But in this case, the residential development doesn't generate a particularly high amount of traffic during the Saturday peak hour. So usually, analyzing the weekday AM and PM peak hours captures a critical time.
Okay, so, just to kind of, I'm not a traffic engineer, so just to kind of level-set this and put it in maybe layman's terms, the traffic study did not, did not have impact on any, there was no weekends. Weekend traffic patterns was not in there. So with that, though, you have residents, you're building a residential unit that will be using that going in and out of those developments. And I'm just trying to conceptualize this from a real-world kind of application here. If I'm off-base, the chair can...
You're all right.
Put me in order. But you have the residential, you have residents kind of going in and out of that development at various times during the weekend peak hours to go to the area amenities that may attract those folks to this development. So I'm just trying to kind of understand, and from what I'm gathering, and that's okay, but what I'm gathering, that there's nothing in this report that is going to tell me how weakened traffic patterns are. We're just doing a standard Monday through Friday, peak AM, peak PM hours.
I think what you're asking, Jeff, is what does the traffic look like, given that the, you know, maybe not necessarily for this development itself, but the surrounding areas, in particular, the Hannaford and Home Depots, their busiest days are going to be a Saturday and a Sunday?
Yeah.
What kind of traffic does this add, does this development add to that existing time, I think is what...
Yeah, and it may not add anything, but I just wanted to kind of ask that question.
Just to see if it does.
You guys have any input on that?
Yeah, yes, I do. The, if you look at the AM and PM peak hours, you know, the two, kind of, key numbers I gave was that four-second increase in delay at either end of Gilchrist, basically, due to the project. I would anticipate that no matter what the traffic is at those intersections on weekends, it might be more, but I'd say it probably isn't because those are commuter roads, too. And I'm conjecturing a little bit here, and I probably shouldn't do that, but the order of magnitude change due to the projects would probably be similar, okay? I don't see the project generating more on that weekday PM peak hour than it would during a weekday AM or PM when commuters and so on are going in and out of the residential sites. So I would not expect there to be any kind of a meaningfully different result looking at the Saturday peak hour. And the Sunday peak hour is definitely going to be less traffic than the Saturday peak hour.
So what is your weekday peak hour, taking a left out of the development headed up towards 102?
The volume or the level of service?
Volume, volume.
Okay. Let me go to the correct figure on that. Okay, and you asked about PM, is that right?
Yeah, say your weekday PM, what is your traffic, I'm sorry, weekday AM, what's your traffic leaving the development, taking a left, so headed towards 102?
Okay.
Forty-five?
There are three access points, and if you combine them all, it's 31 vehicles turning left combined and heading toward Nashville Road. And then, for the PM peak hour, it's 11 plus 3 is 14, plus 9 is 23.
Twenty-three, okay. So the big number there is 31. We can say after they turn left, there's three places they're going. They're either going right to Hannaford's, they're going up to 102, or they're taking a left into Home Depot. So if we were conservative, we could say 31 cars, it's 31 divided by 3. I went to Lunedary High School, so I couldn't tell you.
We rooted them all the way up to the signal. We didn't peel any of them off to go to Hannaford or Home Depot.
So that's what I'm asking you. Let's make an assumption that 1/3 of them is going to turn left into Home Depot, 1/3 of them is going to go to Gilchrist, and 1/3 of them is going to go to Hannaford. What is that number? What's 31?
So, yeah.
And 10 and point-something cars, right? And vehicles per peak in the hour. So just to get an idea that there's a potential of 10 vehicles that may go left into Home Depot, may go right into Hannaford's that have come out of this development in your peak hour, 10, I think, is a pretty safe number, no? And that's assuming that everything's split in thirds.
It would be of that order of magnitude, you know, we're not talking three digits, we're talking two digits or so?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Two quick questions. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, you mentioned in the traffic study, it's assumed 50% go left, 50% go right. Was that...
Well, again, if that was a two-way intersection, so like Kim is saying, you know, like, as they take a left out of the site, they get to Gilchrist and Nashville Road, there's a percentage that will go left, percentage will go right.
So this doesn't assume that 50% of the people leaving this development are going to go right down towards Kendall Pond?
Correct, correct. So that's why I gave you the Reader's Digest version.
Okay, all right.
Just to understand how they do it.
Awesome, thank you. Other question is, I noticed on page, on slide 33, you mentioned there's 30 vehicle trips daily for Lincoln Park. Is that a public facility?
No, it's just private within the development. It's for the residents, so...
So that's 30 separate individual trips to go to Lincoln Park?
I don't think, so the park area, you know how they analyze the driveway? How many trips were in and out of that driveway?
Four trips out. This is for the PM peak hour, four trips out and four trips in. But that's kind of conservative and almost double-counting. We analyze that as almost freestanding usage, and really, those trips might end up being largely walking trips back and forth through the development, too.
You're making, so the assumption is that somebody's leaving their house, driving from their house, taking a right off of whatever street that is and pulling right into Lincoln Park?
Correct.
As opposed to, I'm just going to go walk over to the park?
Correct.
So it's not new traffic coming into the area. It is existing traffic from the development, staying in the development, but nonetheless, it's coming out onto a public road and turning back in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I actually believe we treated it as new traffic coming into the area, which is conservative.
When in reality, it's not.
Right.
Before I go to the board here, does anybody have any questions?
I got a question, well, more elaboration. This is in regards to comment 24 from our consultant, which is on page 10 of the response to comments. And comment 24 from our consultant reads, "In regard to the conclusion or recommendations on page 44, while it is agreed that the increase in trips on any approach is less than 100 trips, that does not mean the added volume will not have a noticeable impact. As previously noted in comments 18 and 19 above, there are noticeable degradations directly caused by the adding of the project-generated traffic volumes. Given the degradation in these operations contributed by the proposed development, the applicant should develop recommended mitigations, including a discussion of the applicant's fair contribution toward funding the mitigation for Lunedary zoning site plan regulations 3.14.10. Additionally, the applicant should indicate with the, coordinate with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to receive their feedback on the impacts to the Nashville Road-Gilchrist Road intersection operation." So I'm just looking for an elaboration and details on that.
Okay, well, what we did in the traffic study was we came up with some overall conceptual ideas of improvements that could be made in the area, but we don't believe the improvements are mitigation for the project. These would be general improvements, improvement concepts regardless of the project. For example, at the intersection of Gilchrist, Kendall Pond, and South, the possibility of a second southbound lane on Gilchrist coming to the multiway stop. The two combined projects adds four seconds of delay, so adding a whole lane might not be considered a necessary mitigation. It's not a 10- or 20-second increase in delay. So that's one concept. Then, at the intersection of Nashville Road and Gilchrist, the possibility of enhancing the turn lanes, provide more queue storage, the possibility of signal timing refinements, which probably need to happen over time anyway as traffic volumes fluctuate. That's what we're talking about.
Could you refresh a little more detail, please?
The, for example, at the signalized intersection, some of the queue lengths in the analysis, and some of that's without the projects, fill the length of the turn lanes. That's something that could be looked at more by the town, for example. It's something that, it's kind of a long-term measure that could be taken. It's something the town might wish to consider. The impacts of the project overall, four seconds of delay added to the intersection, to me, as a traffic engineer, wouldn't make it, it wouldn't be like, for example, putting in a Home Depot where you have four lanes on the main road, and you're adding a driveway, and you need to put in a double-turn lane to get into the site. We're not talking that kind of traffic.
Yeah, I think we're interested in what you're contributing to the, in addition to what's already there.
The percent of an increase of what we're adding to that intersection is what you're...
The, you know, specific number and also a percentage, too.
Okay, I can give you the specific numbers.
Percentage is always the best indicator.
Okay, I can give you a specific number just by looking at the right figure in the impact study. And I'm going to go to figures nine and 10. If you look at figure nine, we see the added traffic at the Gilchrist Road-Nashville Road intersection. And as an example, going northbound on Gilchrist, the two projects combined had 26 left turns, six through movements, and 26 right turns. And Nashville Road headed southwest, left turn into Gilchrist toward the site, nine vehicles. Straight across Gilchrist Road from north to south, two vehicles. Right turn from Nashville Road eastbound to Gilchrist Road, seven vehicles. So that's the morning increase. And again, we didn't peel any of the traffic off and have it go toward Home Depot or Hannaford. We rooted all the traffic all the way up through the intersection. Figure 10 shows the numbers for the PM peak hour. The left turn is 15 vehicles coming out of Gilchrist, four added through movements coming out of Gilchrist, 19 added right turns coming out of Gilchrist. Then, left turns from Nashville Road into Gilchrist toward the site, 26. Right turns from Nashville Road northbound or eastbound, headed into Gilchrist toward the south, 21. And movements straight across Gilchrist, six. And I did a calculation earlier today about how many vehicles are already, are at the Gilchrist-Nashville Road intersection, I believe under the no-build condition. And I think the number I was getting was something like 4,000. So I don't have a calculated percentage, but it's a pretty small one.
Yes, I would agree with that. And also, have you talked with the DOT?
No, we've not talked to the DOT about that. Usually, we reserve that till later in the process, and Mr. Trotter traditionally has been involved with those discussions.
Yes, yes, because the state wants to know what you're doing to their highway, so you don't want to make them angry.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Can we back up? When you first started talking after he had asked his question, you were talking about improvements. You almost made it sound like the improvements would be recommended irregardless of the development. Is that what I got out of you on that?
I wouldn't even say I'm recommending them. I'm putting them out there. These are possibilities. And I believe they would be, they're all things that you might want to look at regardless. For example, at the Gilchrist-Kendall Pond South Road intersection, the delays during the PM peak hour without the project are already, it's already in delayed operations range. And at the signal, Nashville Road and Gilchrist, really, overall, delays don't change much due to the project. And as a highway system gets used over the years, it should get looked at and relooked at over time. The DOT should and probably does relook at the signal timing and see if they need to tweak some numbers in the controller. And if there need to be projects to provide major new infrastructure, that would obviously be something the town probably wouldn't even do at an intersection like that. It would end up being either a DOT project, or if there's some major development going in town, that might contribute to it or provide the work. Or if there are a bunch of, a number of smaller projects, there might be an impact-sharing system where the funds are pooled, and the money goes towards some plan to upgrade the area to accommodate those little gradual increases in traffic that happen over time.
I was going to say, you came up, so you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Kevin Smith, Six King Philip Drive, and working as a consultant on this project with the Masetti's. And I wanted to just expound upon a little bit of what Kim has offered and go back to your question art as well. So in looking at, in kind of summarizing what we've been talking about with the traffic, as was explained, there was a traffic scoping meeting that took place with town staff and with the potential developers for the development across the street and with this development as well. Out of that came the result of looking at all of these intersections. That traffic analysis and study was done. We were then provided comments from the town's traffic engineer on that. We then responded to comments. Those comments were then responded to, and that's where we are this evening. And if I could maybe offer a suggestion to kind of bring this to a resolution so that we're not just on a merry-go-round of perpetual traffic studies, but something that everyone could be happy with. I think there's kind of two issues going on right now. One, you have just the traffic impact from this particular development, which is shown to be rather minimal on all of these intersections. But you do have the existing conditions of some of these intersections as well that, over time, may need improvement by the town. And the town's traffic engineer had asked us to make some suggestions, which we made independent of this particular development, but things the town could look at perhaps in the future of doing to try to improve certain intersections. The last round of these comments then asked the developer to further game out those improvements, if you will, and show what the impact would be if those improvements were actually made. We kind of feel that's beyond the jurisdiction of this development to do that, that that's... We kind of feel that's beyond the jurisdiction of this development to do that, that that's something the town ought to be taking on. That being said, in speaking with the Masetti's, I know that they are open to, as a as a condition of approval, to making a financial contribution towards a future study or actual improvement by the town to any one of these intersections. But I think it's probably that's something that's probably best led by the town to do, not the developer, whose actual impacts for this development are pretty minimal on this. So I would just offer that to the board.
John or Kelly, do you have any comment on that?
I think there's there's too much there's too many unknowns right now, Jake, as far as the discrepancies in the the analysis. You know, the one thing that that Kim kind of kept harping on was the delay. He didn't get into the volume, the capacity ratios, didn't get into any of the queue lengths or anything like that. There's some still some concerns, and you all see the comments from our third-party consultant. You know, the the report right now is not final, in my opinion.
Okay, so it's still a work in progress.
It's still a work in progress. So we shouldn't be doing any horse trading now, not knowing what, again, and I disagree that with Mr. Smith, that, you know, when you do a you look at the improvements, well, what those improvements, how well that improve the corridor? And that, as you can see, the comment number seven from Hoyle Tanner indicates that, and that is per our regulations. The applicant should perform analysis of the potential modifications for the regs state the town and understand the potential improvements to operations associated with modifications. So again, a lot of it is, you know, the understanding what how it's going to improve those intersections.
John, I'm sorry, you said comment seven on...
The traffic.
The traffic. The the traffic study itself.
Correct.
This looks like it's related to crashes.
And B.
Unless I'm looking at the wrong.
43, which was 20 crashes attributed to the road.
Yeah, that's that's our comment seven.
I think he's talking about the letter that's dated today, the very last page of it.
Okay.
Comment number seven.
Correct. And as you can see in that comment, that comment letter, there's a number of repeated comments that haven't been addressed.
Can you go over that a little bit?
In terms of...
You're saying repeated, what is a repeated comment that hasn't been addressed here?
So again...
Okay, am I looking at, hold on.
Yeah.
I've got it up for you, Mr. Chair.
This is today's memorandum?
Correct.
Okay. So you're saying repeat comment from 43, previous comment number six.
Page 11, that's the last page.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, there's...
Yeah, please.
A total of 12 comments on the traffic letter that you're referring to. If you're asking how many repeat comments of those 12, the answer is 10.
So I guess walk me through that. What does... Kim, do you have response to if they're saying 10 of the 12 comments are repeats, do you have response to those? Walk me through, did you not give an answer? Did you not give a response? Or is it not sufficient?
No, I just I got these comments, this this latest memorandum at four o'clock today, and there's a lot of detail in it, which I haven't been able to digest and compare. I guess what I'd say is, from the standpoint of what a traffic impact study in general is supposed to do, look at the overall impacts, the the impact study has done it.
I understand that. I realize you've received this one tonight, but work with me here, you know, you say repeat comment from 43, so you were they not answered from the 43 memo?
Well, the intent was to answer them. And we answered them to what we believe the the best of our abilities at the time. And again, I haven't had a chance to digest this and see exactly what needs to be readdressed.
Sounds like this is really too premature.
Yeah, yeah. Can you go back, Kevin, to just work through that again a little bit? You discussed what what exactly the developer was looking to do and what the reasoning behind it was.
Well, for instance, one of these comments that says it's a repeat, if you scroll down, it's probably one of the last comments on there. It talks about the suggestions that were made at the intersections of Gilchrist Road and Nashua Road in terms of signalization. It also talks about the potential of a turning lane at the intersection of South Road and Gilchrist Road. I don't know which.
Yeah, can it can you give me a comment number by chance?
Do you have which comment number that is? Kim, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I will, I'd ask Hoyle Tanner to come up and...
Yeah, I gotta give me a second, guys. I'll have you come up in a minute. Hold on. Can you let me know what number he's trying to refer to? Just I'm trying to orientate myself to what's on the page here.
Okay, repeat what repeat the one you mentioned.
The suggestions that were made by you, Kim, in terms of potential things the town could do to improve the intersections at Gilchrist Road and South Road, Gilchrist Road and Nashua Road. And I believe the the response back from the third-party engineer was they wanted to see they wanted to see that modeled. They wanted to see those improvements.
Number seven.
Doesn't specifically talk about the...
Oh, I think I think I know what what you're talking about. Comment seven, if I might just quickly read it verbatim.
Correct.
The applicant has briefly listed a few potential modifications that Lundery may consider for improving intersection operations, but the modifications have not been included in the capacity analysis. The applicant should perform analysis on the potential modifications per LSPR 314d10 to aid the town in understanding the potential improvement to operations associated with the modifications. The applicant should also expand on the magnitude of the improvements, i.e., length of turn lane extensions or new lanes, et cetera.
And so the point I was getting at is that this is further analysis that we believe is beyond the scope of what we've already shown, the trips that are being generated from this development, that this would be warranted. And rather, what we're saying is this is really something that the town should be taking on, similar to what it's done with Pettingill Road, as doing an overall review of these particular intersections as to what it wants to do to potentially make improvements to them in the future. Masetti would be willing to make a financial contribution toward that future effort, but we believe in believe that continuing these analyses are beyond the scope of what this requires at this point.
The project itself.
Given the minimal impact.
I disagree. It's right in our regulations.
Can you refer to what exactly the regulation is that makes your disagreement?
Yeah, mitigation. Any mitigating measures proposed shall be described in detail and included in the analysis. It is imperative that the applicant the applicants identify improvements to the intersections, even if they don't find them fully, yeah, fully transportation demand management, TDM, non-vehicular transportation, and mass transit should be strongly considered as mitigating strategies. So it says it right in our regulations.
So let me take a crack at it. So so the regulations that you just read from are assuming, I think, that the data shows that it's necessary. Are you saying that the data is showing that it's not necessary to make improvements? And so and so what he just read is moot because you're not there, the threshold wasn't met for you to have to be able to do that? Am I am I close? I'm going to try to piece this together the best I can. There's something else in the regulations that talks about a 10 or 20-second increase in delay. And at that particular location, the end of Gilchrist, I think the delay goes up by four to five seconds. So to me, there's it's mitigation of the projects combined isn't triggered. It's a bad it's a low level of service, level of service F, but that's with or without the project. And when we put the concept out there of what about a second lane coming out of Gilchrist, it was not as project mitigation, but as a concept. Right, so for those for those of you out there on TV, this is the regulations. Okay, this is it. So I was trying to find something to latch on to because traffic is traffic is a question of of perception and tolerance. Agreed, okay? So a person's perception coming here from Winthrop, Massachusetts, says, wow, no traffic, no traffic up here, this is wonderful. Somebody coming from Albany, New Hampshire, comes down here and says, oh, my gosh, this is horrible, I can't tolerate this. But to your point, and you and you just mentioned it, on page 49 of the site plan regulations, E, which is what you just read from, standards, if not more severely limited under other provisions of other laws or regulations, the absolute increase in calculated intersection delay under "build" in quotes, conditions, shall be no more than 10 to 20 seconds. Is what you're saying that you haven't met that threshold?
Yes.
Which means what the town engineer just read from is moot because you haven't met that threshold to trigger what he just read.
I wouldn't use the word moot. I'd say I'd say that we don't meet the threshold.
Okay, so now point two, number two, under C standards, page 49 of that section of this monstrosity. Average daily traffic volume shall not be increased by more than one-third above the "no build" in quotes again, level on any street. So now I think it's I think it would be appropriate at this time for somebody to tell me and the rest of the board, people watching on TV and the people in the room, what is quote-unquote "no build" and what is quote-unquote "build"?
No build is the future traffic volume in 2027 or 2037, we looked at both, with background traffic growth factored in, but without the developments traffic added on.
So so no build is data when the project, it wasn't built, 10 years later, this is what it's going to look like if it wasn't built.
That's correct.
The build data, we built it, here's what it's going to look at in 2027, now compare the two.
Correct.
If you want, if you want. Okay? So my question to staff is, how do I, as a as a board member, come up with a line in the sand for traffic to be able to decide what is acceptable or not, what is tolerable or not, what is perceived or not? I don't know how to do that. I don't know what to do.
And that's why we're having a hard time, too, Tony. That's why the that's why there's four pages of traffic comments. That's why we're recommending a continuance.
So I'm not alone. I feel better.
Yeah.
So that's that's good. But but then how do we then how do how do we, Mr. Chair, then, as a board, say, well, and I'm going to go to extremes, I'm not saying anybody's going to do this, I'm just, for example, in a worst-case scenario, maybe a different project altogether, we say as a board, now, you know what, we think there's going to be too much traffic, so you can't build it. What do we have? What do we have to base that on? How do how do we come up with that conclusion, recognizing the fact that the data is the data, but but the data is, in layman's terms, hard science and math based on assumptions which some people would call guesstimates?
So, if I may, so that you're not getting into build it or not, you're getting into what improvements need to be made to do this.
That helps.
And that's what we need to continue to discuss.
That helps. Thank you. So so, you know, it's it's when I came here in 1978, I could go from Mammoth from Mammoth Road on 102 and get onto 93 South in about 1.7 seconds. Now it's about 15 minutes.
That a Porsche then, too.
No one knows that. Police chief's right there. Don't tell them what color it is, either. So 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 the so the the perception, my perception, is, wow, there's a lot more traffic than there was in 1978, right? How is that Lundery's problem? Well, it's Lundery's problem, it's a lot of it's coming from Hudson because they're getting they're coming onto 93. There's nothing we can do about that. But what is the tolerance? I've my perception is there's a lot more traffic, but my tolerance, believe it or not, is also better than it was. People that know me would say maybe not. But but my my tolerance is better than it than it than it used to be, right? And so maybe it isn't that much of a problem. Maybe this having all those services are worth it. So to Kelly's point, that's very helpful for me as one board member to understand that we're not in a we're not in a situation where we're accepting or refusing, we're in a situation where we're trying to figure out what can be done to mitigate.
Mm-hmm.
And who's going to be responsible for that?
Mm-hmm.
Good?
Yeah.
Thank you for the time.
Who's adding what?
So could I just have you got HTA come up now? Kevin, if you could just step down so they can sit over there.
And just, Mr. Chair, so you're aware, the all of the comments from the last round of comments from HTA were responded to, where you see repeat comments. It just HTA's impression was that they weren't responded to sufficiently, which is that's we can agree to disagree on that between the two traffic engineers, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear as to why it says repeat comment, that they were responded to.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Kevin's comment. They were all responded to, and it's just a disagreement on whether it was enough.
Sure.
So just for the boards, Stephen Haas, traffic engineer with Hoyle Tanner Associates.
Great. If you could just kind of go through a little bit of what has just been talked about here, what HTA is is recommending, I'd appreciate that. And if you could, just speak a little louder into the mic.
Okay. So ultimately, I would agree with Kim, that the development itself does have create a small amount of traffic generation compared to the background roads, especially on 102.
So the traffic that is already there, it could it creates a small amount compared to the traffic that's already there.
Correct. What our comments, the largest part of our comments were aimed at was just fleshing out some of the existing conditions a little better so the town is aware. The southbound movement from Gilchrist to Kendall Pond, as Kim mentioned, the westbound turns onto Gilchrist from 102, and I believe the northbound left from Gilchrist onto onto 102 heading west were our biggest concerns. Those movements are already at level of service F, as Kim went through. What he didn't mention was they're also either close to or over a volume-to-capacity ratio of 1.0. Volume-to-capacity ratio is the the capacity is how much traffic can get by a certain point on a roadway in a certain period of time, and then the volume being how much volume is going through that. And if that gets above one, essentially, you're out of capacity and then you start to have queues build if that volume of traffic continues at that level. So...
Is the volume of traffic in the study hitting that one?
Yes, in some cases it is, some cases it's very close. There are a few where it's just below that one and the project is bumping it over that. There are some where it's already at one and it's exceeding beyond that. And I should say, this is for individual movements at an intersection, it's not the intersection as a whole, as Kim has already highlighted. So the goal of our comments is really just to to show that, so the town is aware, yes, you have some some of these movements, lefts, rights, whatever they are, they already have issues, everyone's aware. And then do the analysis, come up with what potential improvements may be, and as the reg state, it's not necessarily whether you're funding them, it's what does the improvement need to be? And from my perspective, they do the analysis, they say, okay, we need a, you know, we need to add another lane here, or we need to another turn lane, or we need to extend a turn lane by 100 feet, whatever the number is.
So so help me on on the regulation here, if I'm understanding what Tony was just saying. We're saying there's going to be a four-second delay. The reg... The regulation is saying, in order to look at these improvements or recommend these improvements, there should be a ten-to-twenty second delay. So, the development itself, at a four-second delay, is less than half of what is required for, for this, this to kick in, that they should do this study to see what those potential improvements are. Am I correct in saying that?
So, that does appear to be how the regs are written, that it's intersection delay of ten or, ten to twenty seconds or more. So, I would agree. What we are pointing out is individual movements, where you do have delays that are increasing by thirty to sixty seconds in some cases, but it is just the individual left or right turns, not the intersection as a whole. So, that's correct. How the board may interpret what needs to be done based on that, you know, is in your hands.
Does the board have anything on that? Does the board have any questions to it? I, I guess for me, I'm seeing a little bit of a gap here between, I understand what we're asking for, but I don't know that we're, that they're necessarily, I, I guess I'm not understanding how they're meeting the criteria of ten to twenty seconds, that is, what is the required criteria to do this study, when they're only at four seconds. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what that mechanism, mechanism is that says, yes, this development should perform this study.
If, if I'm gathering what you guys are saying is correct, you're saying that it's a four-second delay intersection-wide, correct?
Correct.
And you're saying it's a ten-second delay plus for individual actions inside of that intersection?
For a few of them, yes.
Right? So, if you want to turn, so, traffic coming out of this place, this place, overall impact is four seconds. But if I'm sitting in my car and I want to turn left, it could cost me another, how, how long are you saying?
Thirty seconds in some cases, yeah.
Thirty seconds, okay. So, it's a macro versus a micro level?
Well, and, and so, and so then you could say that the, that the, that the standard to regulation isn't specific enough, because it was allowed to be, well, it was interpreted as, I can split it up into right-left straight ahead, where, where the reg, the reg says intersection.
Correct, so...
So, intersection, intersection to me is, intersection to me is combined.
Yeah.
The intersection combined, if it's under ten, then it's under ten.
I know if I'm sitting in my car for an extra thirty seconds, I'm thinking, I'm really glad this is only impacting four seconds.
Let me, let me just add, we didn't interpret it that it could be split up, we agree that it says intersection as a whole, we just felt that it was important that this be put on the table, that these individual movements are...
My point was that it was written and left to be interpreted by however someone wants to interpret it. That, that's my comment.
Yeah, there's openings there.
So, so really, the, the elephant in the room really is, is, is who's going to pay for it? That's really, that's really where we're at. So, so there appears to be, there appears to be a need for some mitigation, maybe, and we're at the point of, well, okay, who's going to, who's going to pay for it?
And if I could just finish what I was saying earlier, my thought is, if you do the analysis, you know what the mitigation needs to be, you have a better idea what that may cost, it's easier to say, who's got to pay, or what a portion of that might be, so...
Yeah, because I mean, it's existing traffic and it's traffic that they're adding.
And, and we're only talking, we can't do anything on 102, right? So, this is strictly Gilcrest Road that offers any kind of mitigation.
Yeah. Coming back to when Kevin was on, they were discussing, and help walk me through this again, they were discussing paying a portion of the stu, or putting money into the study, but not completing the study? Is that what I was understanding, what you were saying? That you'd be willing to, the developer would be willing to, walk me, I feel like it was an hour ago now, walk me through what you first said when you were, came up here.
Kind of just in simplistic terms, we're basically talking about the town, the additional studies we're talking about going through, rather than putting that on the onus of the developer to do those additional things that, that we're discussing right now that are in these comments letter, is saying, no, this is where the developer's work ends, this stuff is on the town to see what may be needed, what may be needed for future improvements, not necessarily is needed today, but what could be needed. But as a part of that, the developer is willing to pay a proportional contribution towards whatever that is, whether it's towards a study, towards whatever the improvement is, but not continuing to go through this exercise of doing more and more studies for something that we don't believe, or that we've demonstrated, we're not, you know, have, we're contributing a minimal impact to it. And not, and not meeting the threshold.
Four seconds, not the ten to twenty seconds.
Correct.
So, my question for the board would be, is how does the board feel about that?
I have a question. We're talking about maybe improvements at the Gilcrest and Nashua Road intersection. The state of New Hampshire owns Nashua Road, so they'd have to be involved. What's the chance of them revisiting that after they just, you know, enlarged that intersection, the whole section of town on 102, because of Woodmont? And so, you think they'd be interested in even considering that now?
One of the mitigation measures might be re-timing the signal?
Okay.
It's been done at, I know on Twenty-Eight, the re-timing of the signalization, I mean, the DOT is involved, New Hampshire DOT is involved with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
For me, I, yeah, this is just me, as one board member speaking, I think there's a lot of unknowns that I would feel more comfortable if the town and the developer kind of just have one more pow-wow, one more kind of continuance, and, you know, I'm leaning towards continuing this application. But I think I would really feel comfortable if there was, you respond to these comments, you start to, you, I think you have a good assessment of where this board is kind of, you know, thinking, and maybe come back to us with, you know, a remedy that would kind serve that. Like, I, I just, I, I feel if we continue talking, we're going to continue to kind of go down rabbit holes that we really can't solve right now.
I think we're starting to go in circles anyway. It's a...
So, I would, I would make a motion to, to drive this to a continuance. However, we do have members of the public that I'd like to kind of also...
Before we do that, we still have a bit to get through.
Respond.
Yeah, and before, before the public comes up, I think it's, it's important to understand that, that, that some of us on the board, I would include myself as some of us, understand that there's a lot of traffic. My perception is that there's a lot of traffic. I, I think that's, that's a given. We know that. The question is, what do we do from here? So, as, as, as one person, I, I think mitigation, one mitigation method would be to try and get the car dealership to stop offloading cars in a travel lane in the middle of the street.
Yes.
Kind of a code enforcement thing, no?
Three, three or four times, three or four times a week. Because I, because I know the traffic study was done on a four-lane road, but it's really only three because one is taken up by, by a tractor trailer that stops in the middle of a lane and unloads cars for however, however long it takes to unload a tractor trailer full of cars, so...
I remember a site planned for the Ford dealership.
I remember like it was yesterday and the question was asked, are you going to stop unloading cars on the road? And the answer was, yes, we don't need to do that anymore because of all these improvements we've made to our site.
Yeah.
You and I were at the same meeting, aren't you? I remember like it was yesterday.
I remember, I remember.
And yesterday, there was a tractor trailer.
So, before we go any further, this is a public hearing, I do want to open it up to the public. Like all public hearing, public comment is accepted and welcomed. So, if I could have you sit down, just so members of the public can come to that, I'll open it up to the public.
Mr. Chair?
I have a letter from Deb Levens. I'd like to read it.
She's here. She's here.
Lynn Depp is here.
Oh, perfect.
Perfect.
Sure. Oh, I can stand. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If you could just state your name and address, please.
Oh, I was about to.
Yeah.
Deborah Levens, I am very recently moved into Twenty-Five Morrison, before that on Gilcrest Road. I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission, so as such, I recuse myself during the discussions of this, this property. I'm on a totally different tack. We heard them, they came in and there was some talk of fencing on the property, and I, I personally am concerned, I don't speak exactly for the Conservation Commission, but our philosophy is pretty clear, we like to try to get as many open, connected spaces and have fencing come in, it's of concern. I do not even know why it's there, but if the planning board feels it needs to be there, I have a suggestion. We did discuss at a meeting six weeks ago, the DEA facility in...
Excuse me, folks, if you, if, Ray, if you guys have to talk, can you please go in the hallway? You know, just please, thank you.
The DEA facility in North Londonderry has fencing required, they need a lot of security. I'm not sure what the security around this building is all about, but we talked to them and they agreed to put raised fencing in, so at least the small critters could get through and perhaps not get caught up on the fencing. And I don't know what, I was in Town Hall and it said chain link in some places on the plan and then something else, which Mike and I were having a hard time deciphering. But I, I would like to suggest that if this does happen that way, that you, the developers consider that kind of more open fencing on the point for, for the conservation. That's it. Thank you very much.
If you could just state your name and address, please, thank you.
Thank you. Doug Dominey from Twenty-Nine Tokonel Drive. Actually, I have two questions. One is, what will be the connection long-term to Ross Drive? And then the other one would be, can we require a sidewalk along Gilcrest? This would actually be on the side of the, of the development where there are sixty-seven units that connects from the Haniford sidewalk down to, I think it's Albany Road?
Albany is the first.
And then there's already a sidewalk, like in front of the cemetery, down to Charleston. So, those two questions, Ross Drive and then the sidewalk on Gilcrest. Thank you. Because there's, I walk along there and there's a lot of traffic and there's really, it's really kind of dangerous on Gilcrest Road.
You're my hero if you walk on that road and get, get away with it.
Still have all...
But you're a lot bigger than me, they're going to see you.
Still have all my bones, yeah. Thank you.
Could somebody answer the Ross Drive question, real quick?
Sure, I'll, I'll answer it. There's no connection to Ross Drive, nothing planned.
There's no planned connection.
None, we don't even abut it in any fashion. There's another piece of land between us and Ross Drive.
Okay, because there is a connection to Ross Drive right now, with like gravel and whatnot. I assumed it was, had to do with this development?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. On the sidewalk, I think you're on the other side of the road, so that would be more, I, I don't know that that would pertain to this development, sir. Thank you.
The Fifty-Two Gilcrest.
Scott Moose, Twenty-Nine Gilcrest. I live right smack dab in the middle of where he says he walks. Well, for over ten years, I have a Siberian Husky. In the last two years, seven, five days a week, once a day, twice on the weekends, take my life in my hands trying to cross that road because my dog wants to go walk in the cemetery. Traffic has become obnoxious. Every morning I leave, I either get flipped off or almost hit. After waiting, I don't, I drive a company truck, I do not do things obnoxiously, but yet every morning, it's detrimental trying to get out of Ross because I'm right on the corner. No one mentioned Ross in their study. That's the most dangerous intersection there. 102 has lights, it's all regulated, everybody stops, people are speeding there. Hundred yards up from my house, the speed limit says twenty-five miles an hour. I see sixty, regularly. And I'm serious, I take, I run across because my dog wants to run.
Help me out real quick, Ross Drive is your further north on the west side...
We're just south of the Apple Orchard where they want to build.
Okay, so it goes Ross Drive, then Tokonel down the hill, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's a nasty place, it's very dangerous, people coming up, people coming down, people coming down, they're flying. I got flipped off this morning, every day coming out of there, because you, once you start going, you're out there. It's not an easy place, very dangerous. I don't see how, that's, that's not going to impact anything further than it already is. The perception and the tolerance is already gone. Twenty years I've lived in that house, nobody has any anymore. It's going to get worse. That's not, and I just had something stolen off of my truck for the first time in twenty years, the other night. Somebody must have needed a piece of my mirror more than I did. It's not going to get any better. Sorry, I just wanted to say my piece.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Maureen Mansfield, Ten Ross Drive. I was kind of concerned with all this talk, that Ross Drive was not mentioned as well. Getting like Scott's guess, you can't take a left out of Ross Drive. In those mornings and at night, you can't take a left, you are taking your life in your hands. It, it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. That's, when we heard about this, I said, where, where are they going to put these cars? They talk about fifty-seven or forty-two or whatever, but at ninety-six units, if I round that up to a hundred, that's two hundred cars, if each family has two cars. The numbers just don't make sense for the amount of traffic that's going to be added to that area. The other thing is, she talked about the gravel road, that I believe is where they put those pumps in, the drill, the wells, to check the water on Ross Drive, that we're the only place that's left in this whole area that doesn't get town water. But we are, we have talks with the EPA and another law firm, and they keep saying, something's going to happen, something's going to happen. Now, here, they're going to put all this right behind us? How's that going to affect our water again? That's...
Are these wells related to the development? Anybody?
No, they're, they're EPA wells.
Yes, they're tink.
The Tinkum Cleanse site. Okay, thank you.
But they're, how close are they getting to those wells? It looks like they're going to be right there. There's the gravel road, the wells are down there, there's actually a well on my property. So, I mean, how is it going to affect all of this? Going to affect our drinking water again? I mean, we have Second Wind, I must have paid ten thousand dollars in water systems over the years, after Home Depot, the same thing, we heard the same thing, you know, so it's just, I had to say my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir?
Francis Dolan, I live on Ross Drive, too. How close to the Superfund site does this get? Because it's slow, it's slowly been leaking towards Ross Drive. Now, is their development going to mitigate that and force more over towards us? And during the development, how will it affect our wells? They have, they have water coming in, great, but they have to dig or blast. When Home Depot came in, they destroyed my, my water filtration system. I can't afford to keep spending all this money on water filtration systems. And, and the traffic? Yeah, the traffic's crazy, getting worse. Can't, can't leave my street without taking my life in my hands. And in winter, it's even worse, they just come sliding right on by. And there's three, three roads coming down this development, or two?
Technically, three. With, with Lincoln Park, which is their, I don't know what you want to call it, recreational area.
Is that, is that specific for the development, or...
Yes, yes. So, there's technically three.
Three roads and that's just, you know, so much per road, great, that's three separate, more...
Yes, yes. So there's technically three.
Three roads, and that's just, you know, so much per road, great. That's three separate, more roads I have to try to pass. You know, something's got to be done. You guys are developing like crazy off of, off of Gilchrist. Something's got to be done. Now, I don't know how to fix this. I'm spending a lot of money on property taxes. They keep going up. You're building like crazy. I'm not seeing a result. I just can't see the increase. And are these going to be families, or just older people, or what's the deal?
I believe these are just market, market townhomes, correct? So you, me, anybody in the room would be-
Impact schools and everything else?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jake, I just, after the public-
Yeah, anyone else from the public?
Ray President, 3 Gary Drive. I've heard all this, and what's really important here is the impact on the citizens of Londonderry. And safety is key. We're talking about traffic that is already bad, that this, even though we say it's going to have minimal impact, which somebody did a study on, they're the experts, but all of this has an impact on the citizens of Londonderry, which we are dealing with. We're talking about mitigation, which ultimately is probably going to fall on the town to do improvement, which is going to cost more money for the town. As far as the state is concerned, you go to the state, and the state's going to tell you, if you want to approve all of this development, that's your responsibility to take care of it. So probably the state ain't going to pay for it. So I just want to say that we need to be careful with what we approve on the board. This may be preliminary, but I think we, we got to really think closely about all of this. Somebody mentioned about water. Somebody mentioned about a Superfund site that is right behind this. And by the way, somebody also mentioned about Boston Ave. Some of the folks on Boston Ave have contaminated wells, too, I believe. I could be wrong on that. And why do they? Where did that contamination come from? Water in the ground can be very deep. By the way, there were, there were test pits down out there. Does anybody have records of what those were?
I don't, those test pits, I don't believe are relevant to the site plan itself.
You folks have a job to do. You have a lot of decisions to make, and I appreciate what you do. But we have to think about the health and safety of the citizens on all of these things that we improve, that we approve.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
John Farrell, 4 Hancock Drive, member of the Town Council. So just listening to what the people are saying here is, is that, you know, when I sat on this planning board a long time ago and did it for 10 years, the Elliott came here and built, and adjacent properties, you know, had issues, and they were dealt with and fixed. If, is this, I have a question. Is this development bringing public water to support it?
Yes.
They're tying into it.
So why can't we take care of Ross Drive? Why can't you look at that and take care of these people? The Tinkham Superfund site is still being monitored today. Those wells are still being monitored today. Let's figure out how to work with whom we need to work with to take care of these people on Ross Drive. They're the abutters to it. And let's face it, when they start drilling out there and everything else, we already know from the development that's happened with the Nevens, with Home Depot, that their well water is affected every single time. We may not be able to fix it for everybody, but these people are abutters. So please take that in consideration. With regards to traffic? You need to be able to have some sort of accountability here with the traffic. You can't have some sort of, you know, we're going to do something, or we're willing to contribute something. Find out what the answer is, and then move forward with the correct answer, and try to do it the one time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public before we close public comment? Seeing none, I will, I'll bring it back to the board. I do have a couple of questions. Can we go over, I think it was Ms. Levens brought it up. What is the reason for?
Chair, are you closing the public comment?
Yes.
Just verify.
Yes, I have closed public comment. Thank you.
So in our initial review on the project, some of the abutters had concerns about residents in our project cutting into the open space in the Nevens project. So we had agreed that we would put a four-foot fence, five-foot fence, whatever was required, along that, that boundary, and it got extended around the CO buffer to the wetland that cuts across the site. So that plan just got carried through on the site plan, and it is still the plan to put a fence up of that height to that area, so.
Chain link is what it says.
It's chain link.
Four-foot chain link fence, I believe it was, yeah.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. What was the, why a fence? What were they asking?
That was the request.
For what reason?
Residents of the Nevens don't want people walking on their open space. There's a large open-to-base tract that's part of the Nevens.
Isn't a lot of it swamp?
Some of it swamp, yeah.
And is my recollection correct that there's more than a football field of open space between the back lot line for this development and the start of the Nevens lot line? More than, more than a football field?
I'd say it's at least that, yep.
It's just under 800 feet linear.
Yep.
How big's the football field?
300 feet. That's the, that's the largest, because it's a sawtooth, it's a sawtooth piece of land in the back, if I remember correctly. So the deepest is 800, but the closest is 361, if I, if I measured it correctly today. So we could talk about the fence when it's time to talk about the fence.
Anne?
My concern is about the driveway to the playground, the Lincoln Park. Now, if you say it's just for residents, why do you need an outlet onto the, onto Gilcrest? Why can't the people in the development just walk into it through the paths you could put there?
It could be done that way, but there's more handicap accessibility by going out onto Gilcrest and going into that area. So we generated a few parking spaces around it for that purpose.
Okay, but I'm concerned about cars leaving your development, taking a right, and then slowing down quickly to get into that area because of the traffic that goes so fast, and then getting out of it, and then stopping on the northern lane to get back in, or the southern lane to go, you know, go back in, the traffic that creates also. So I thought it would be, let's mutter, to just have it directly into your development, any kind of pathways. They can be handicap accessible pathways. And, and it would void people driving, having to take their car, drive out, and then, you know, drive back. You're adding just, to me, congestion, and a dangerous kind, where people do speed because of their change in the number of lanes from Gilcrest, where it hits 102, coming down, it goes from two lanes to one, you know, right before your property.
Yeah, it stops at the Hanafords, so.
Right, so I'm worrying that, you know, there'll be more congestion there, and then an issue with people turning in there. To me, it's, it's a lot of tire, not necessary, and you could use the money to increase the handicap access directly from your residents.
Real quick, and then-
Yeah, I think Anne has a very good point, because I think Lincoln Park is just for your project, and it should be kept on your grounds, stay on public roads.
So I think there's a lot here. I feel as though the general consensus of the board is going to be looking to continue this. I know we still have a lot of conversation to have, but this clearly seems like it's going to get continued. Few things that are sticking out in my mind is having more of a conversation of Ross Drive and what that looks like for water. And I think the general feeling of the board through our discussion was that we want to see more done on the traffic. Am I correct?
Yes.
I also, I also agree with Anne.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree with Anne. Personally, I'm looking at it, and I don't, just don't, in the development, I don't see where they're, the way this is set up now, where they would be able to put a roadway in there, John, am I correct?
There's already a path.
Correct.
A path is much different than a roadway.
They didn't probably lose any unit or two.
One, very quick last question. I do, I think we should go through our waivers in the CUP. I think we can get those out of the way tonight. Last question I had is on your landscape plan here. I would assume that Buildings 91 through 96 have a landscape plan. I'd assume that's essentially duplicating through all grouping of six or seven units?
Units, yes.
It's, it's the same, it's just you've shown it on one?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. What is, before we move forward to give them a little bit more direction, what is the board's, what's the board's general feeling on this roadway into Lincoln Park and, and where it is?
So I'll offer that. I think it's going to be impossible to police. Having the road, the access road off of Gilcrest is going to look like it's just another public space that anybody coming down the road could use. I think it was going to be destined specifically for the residents, and it should stay within the development.
I, I agree with Anne in that you're going to have people coming down, someone's going to turn onto Gilcrest and immediately hit the brakes, and that's going to be unexpected.
And they'll have a problem.
I agree with that.
So I, I think we need to look at that, gentlemen, and what a solution to that looks like that keeps, keeps the roadway in the development. I think that we need to look at what Mr. Farrell had discussed on, on water, and I think the board is, is ultimately leaning towards, we need a little bit more info on I would like to go through, I'd like to go through and discuss the waivers here. I think we can make some motions on the waivers as well as the CUP before we get on to the application itself. So going through the waivers, I would be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I can help you by, I'll read the waiver request.
Sure.
Waiver request number one, the applicant has requested a waiver from Town of Londonderry zoning ordinance, section 5.1.3.
John, can you bring that mic a little closer to you?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thought I was talking loud enough, but as I get tired, I mumble. Zoning ordinance, section 5.1.3, limiting phasing to three multifamily dwelling, buildings per year, and total number of dwellings to 48 units per year. The applicant requests to allow 48 townhouse-style dwelling units per year. Staff doesn't all have a recommendation.
I think we have granted that in other situations.
Yeah. I, I don't have a problem with that.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we approve waiver number one, under the circumstance that the waiver may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Have a motion?
A second.
I have a second for, for Art. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Second waiver request, the applicant is requesting a waiver from Londonderry Subdivision Regulations 3.09.F3 to provide 20-foot wide driveways from the street to the, to the garage. Staff does support the waiver since this is going to be private roadways.
John, did you say 20 or 22?
22.
Okay, thank you.
I know, we've, we've certainly done that in the past. Personally, I think aesthetically, it looks much better as well, so I'd be looking for a motion on that.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve waiver number two, allowing a 22-foot driveway from the street to the garage, under the stipulation that the waiver may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
I have a motion from Lynn.
Second.
Second from Jeff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Waiver request number three, the applicant has requested a waiver from Londonderry Site Plan Regulation 3.09G and Londonderry Site Plan Regulation 308C2 to only provide limited sidewalks. Staff has no recommendation.
We've granted that in the past, though, so I know that-
I, in, in speaking to, I know these gentlemen spoke from it, spoke on it earlier of previous developments. It, it's ironically enough, I believe, more walkable than walkways, so I, I think it's fair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve waiver number three.
I have a motion from Lynn. Take a second.
Second.
Second from Jeff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the waiver passes.
Next waiver request, number four, the applicant has requested a waiver from Londonderry Site Plan Regulations 309F2, 309S6, and Exhibits D2 and D3 to provide less than the required site distance at 25 miles per hour design speed for intersections within the interior of the Juniper Ridge development. This staff does support that, is the provided site distance is for the 25 mile per hour design speed.
I'll, I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve waiver number four, and in that, the waiver can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
I have a motion from Lynn.
Second.
Second from Jason. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The waiver passes.
Fifth waiver request, the applicant is requesting a waiver from Londonderry Site Plan Regulation 309R to design the roads at 25 mile per hour design speed, limit standards rather than the required 35 mile per hour speed limit standards. Staff does support the waiver request since this is going to be a private roadway.
Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve waiver number five, as granting the waiver will not create substantial detriment to the public good.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second, second from Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Sixth waiver request, the applicant is requesting a waiver from Londonderry Site Plan Regulation 403 to locate the planning board signature block in a different location than as shown in Exhibit 2 of the regulation. Staff does support this waiver request.
For motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve waiver number six. The waiver may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Motion from Lynn, looking for a second?
Second.
Second from Art. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Waiver, waiver request number seven, the applicant is requiring, requesting a waiver from Londonderry Site Plan Regulation 601C, which mandates no certificate of occupancy be issued until all on-site improvements are complete and inspected. The applicant requests certificates of, of occupancy be issued for individual units prior to completion of the wear and course of payment. Time of writing this, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff didn't support that, again, just not knowing where the board was at with waiver request number one regarding the phasing. I would ask that, that we just maybe delay it acting on this one at this time, seeing that they're going to be coming back, and we can have a clearer understanding of the phasing, and, and make sure that everything is shown on a, on a plan that's clear, not just a note form that contradicts itself.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the applicant to make sure that the plans state that there's going to be no trip and fall hazards created by raised objects in the roadway until such time that the wear course is added.
We don't need a motion on that, I don't believe. So, thank you very much. We have, I believe we have a-
No.
No?
Just the application itself.
Okay. So I am going to be looking for a motion to continue this application to, Kelly, what would be our next?
The next meeting is our June 12th or June 12?
Yes, ma'am.
May I speak?
Yeah. No, unfortunately, I can't let you speak now because we're going through motions. But is this pertaining to the date of the meeting? Or when you're, when the next availability- Or when the next availability on the meeting would be?
This is going to be pertaining to a little bit more guidance on what we're supposed to do with traffic.
Okay. So you're looking for a little bit more direction from the board, so?
Yeah, we feel like this is very open-ended.
Open-ended.
Can we just come up for one second?
Yeah, I'll let it happen. Please make it brief.
My name is John Kellinzakis. I work for Macedi Development. I've been here before. I live in Pumpkin Patchway now in London area at Cross Farm. It's been great, but as far as traffic, I think what you're saying is we should go back and analyze every possible way to improve the traffic on seven intersections and come up with a cost of this, and then we pay our fair share. It just seems like such a broad request of what we're supposed to be doing. You've already heard from Kevin that we don't have a problem contributing our fair share. Just this could be a long-term study that you need to what you really need to do, and this could take months and months and months to get down to a right answer. So I think in our project, we've done six projects in town, we have no problem paying for our share of what has to happen out there. It's just getting to what has to happen, really should be, I think, a town decision, right? Because we can say all we want that our engineer thinks we need this and that, and it's going to come back, well, maybe we should do more, and who's contributing. It's just a long-term project that we feel like our commitment to saying we'll pay our fair share of whatever our impacts are, we have no problem with that. We just don't know how to get from point A to point B now in a timeframe that's going to be less than three, four, or five months. So what are we supposed to be studying, I guess?
If I could just add, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Kelly?
This board does not negotiate development agreements or memorandums of understanding that would include such costs, dollar amounts that we're discussing. That's a matter for the town council. That being said, if the planning board wants to discuss and further see off-site improvements, that is something that this board can consider. I think that's what you're referring to.
So what does the board want to do?
I think we need to be clear on, you know, what the off-site improvements are, and I think it's going to be clear with staff, and I think a meeting of the minds between the two traffic engineers. The two traffic engineers agreed entirely, that would be fine. They don't, there's some details there, it's the old adage, the devil is always in the details. So let staff work with the traffic engineers and come back to the board.
So staff works with the two traffic engineers, they determine...
And the applicant also, so.
Then somebody says, this is what we need for mitigation, right? And it's going to be all encompassing for a lot of areas, correct?
We don't know.
We don't know. That's why you should be talking to staff. Get it a little more focused than it is right now.
Kelly, John, anything?
I think we need to finalize the traffic, you know, we all need to be on the same page with the traffic. That's the beginning point. How do we know what their fair share is? A million dollars of fair share today? Don't know.
Yeah, and to my point earlier, you have all discussed various aspects to it, and I suggested that you all get together with our town staff and come back to us with the, with some kind of recommendations.
You're in the middle of a motion, just a reminder.
I know.
But I mean, this, I mean, we've kind of gone off the rails a little bit here. So I, do we have an issue with kind of working?
I would caution you on this discussion, you're in the middle of a motion.
All right, I've said enough, thank you.
With staff.
And I don't believe we're in a motion, because there has not been a motion made yet to continue this, so we...
You're discussing your motion.
Yeah. Back to our point, to me, it doesn't sound like, what I was getting at, we don't necessarily have a definitive date as of right now that's going to be sufficient for either staff or them to figure out what needs to be done, what's both fair and reasonable for everybody here to be done.
Generally, we continue to the next month's hearings. Those dates are June 5th or June 12th.
Okay.
12.
So then I'll look for a motion to continue this to June 12th. I need a motion. Yeah, so moved, second, perfect. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this has been continued to the June 12th meeting.
Thank you.
All right, folks, we'll give you a second to get out of the room before we start the next thing here, but we are going to have, up next is the public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan and conditional use permit to construct approximately 89,000 square foot behavioral health hospital, along with associated site improvements at 6 and 10 Innovation Way, Gateway Business District, Bellinger Properties, and Five N Associates are the owner, with Tarrytown Real Estate Holdings. So if you guys want to come up while people are getting out of the room, that'd be great.
Just let me know when you'd like to begin. Thank you.
Are there any residents that are here for the final two applications, which are Burton Drive?
One-story office building, laboratory building, Burton Drive.
Yeah, and Liberty Utilities. Is there anybody from the public here for those two? So seeing none, we'll go, if there was, seeing none, we'll go forward with this public hearing. Let me, just give me a second to get to my pages here, because we've gone through a bit. I am, we're going through, let me get this one out of the way. Bring this one up. I am looking for a recommendation on, or a motion on completeness, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Can I get a second?
Please, second, sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And this has been accepted as complete. Applicants, you're already up here, and you can get going.
Okay, super, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, other members of the board and staff. My name's Ari Pollak, I'm with the Gallagher Firm in Concord. I'm here for the applicant this evening, which is Tarrytown Real Estate Holdings, Inc. Tarrytown's under purchase agreement to buy land at 6 and 10 Innovation Way here in London Dairy, upon which a behavioral health hospital is proposed to be constructed, operated, and maintained. The hospital will be owned and operated by a joint venture between Solution Health and Acadia Healthcare. And with me this evening from the development team is Tate Curdie and Clara Deedle of Solution Health, Miles Kramer from Acadia Healthcare, and then our technical team, Jim Petropolis from Hayner Swanson, Derek Roche from Vanessa Associates, and Chip Hill from Stengel Hill Architecture. Before I turn things over to the technical team, which would be primarily Jim and Chip, we had asked, and she graciously agreed to accommodate us, I hoped to ask Assistant Commissioner Marissa Hen from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services to join me up at the podium and to talk a little bit about resources in the areas of behavioral health and treatment for the state, and about how the state views this particular opportunity and its network of service. And here she is. Thank you so much for joining us, I know it's getting late.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and honorable members. It's really important to come to meetings like this and see government in action in a way that I'm reminded of in my day job, but I think when it comes to projects like this, this is stuff that really, really changes, changes lives, and I think changes communities for the better. I'm sure you're all aware, as we all are, that we as a state and as a society are facing huge challenges when it comes to mental health. I would say probably there's no one in this room who doesn't, isn't either experiencing the challenges of mental health directly, or knows someone, doesn't know someone who is, who is doing that. One in four of us here in the state of New Hampshire is living with someone with a mental health issue. And so part of what makes this project exciting is how much of a difference it will make for people like us and our neighbors and fellow Granite staters, who, when they are experiencing the acute need for care, will have somewhere to go. You're probably familiar with a phenomenon that's talked about in the news called emergency department boarding. Here in New Hampshire, as we sit here tonight, there's probably around 18 or 20 adults sitting in noisy, sterile emergency departments waiting for a place to go for care. And if you or your loved one has ever been in that situation, it is truly one of a person's darkest days, just so wishing that just as if someone who had a heart attack would get care, I think pretty urgently, someone who in a mental health crisis needs it really deserves no less. The challenge is one of supply and demand. Fundamentally, here in New Hampshire, I can tell you as deputy commissioner, we don't have enough mental health beds. It's not the only problem we have when it comes to mental health, but it's a pretty big one. And so I think what excites me about this project and what has earned the team the support of our state and a significant financial allocation of about $15 million toward this project, is the way in which it is tailored to meet the needs of New Hampshire, and that it will help us as a state achieve what we have termed Mission Zero, which is to have no adult waiting in an emergency department for care, but instead to help get them the services they need in a very therapeutically appropriate, high-quality way so that they can go back to their lives and jobs and families and move on with bright lives. And so what I will say, just, I know there's lots to get to, but is just this team has demonstrated how organized and transparent and committed to public mission they are. And I know that this project, while no community says, oh, we'd love to have a psych hospital, I can assure you as someone who lives very close to what will be the only larger psychiatric hospital, New Hampshire Hospital, that actually having a facility like this in our community is a source of great meaning to the community and can be done thoughtfully and responsibly and in a way that really benefits a community and helps it care, care for its own, care for its own. So just in closing, just want to say how much this project aligns with the goals that the state has when it comes to better meeting mental health need and really positions New Hampshire to be a leader in that regard. I think it is being done in a way that is very sensitive to the needs of local communities, as you'll hear more about, and I think the team has demonstrated that they are crossing every T and dotting every I in terms of meeting the expectations we, as a state, have placed on them in return for the large sum of money we're giving, and I would expect nothing different when it comes to their fulfilling of commitments to the local host for this facility as well. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the rest of our presentation would be by the applicant and applicant's team, so I was hoping we could excuse the assistant commissioner, but I wanted to see if any of the board members had questions before I made that offer.
Anybody have any questions for?
I have a question. I'm not sure it's appropriate or not for you, but so Hampstead Hospital's in the news a lot lately. How is this facility going to be different from Hampstead Hospital?
Yeah, thank you so much for asking about that. So Hampstead Hospital is actually part of my portfolio, and so it's been some late nights of the MUR requesting quotes and things. So what I can tell you about Hampstead Hospital is, first of all, this is a facility, the one that is under discussion today, is not a state facility, right? So whereas Hampstead Hospital, which is a facility I'm very proud of, and that is providing fantastic care to a very acute population, we are getting our feet under us as a, as this is a new venture for the state and figuring out exactly who it is we can serve and how to get staff and how to maintain the high levels of service that are needed for this population. One thing I'm a little envious of with this project is that you're dealing with people who have a tremendous amount of experience in the industry and in behavioral health. I actually come to them with questions about how to improve care at Hampstead Hospital. So there's no question that safety, and I would encourage you, and I know that it came up at an earlier town council meeting, like questions of safety and security are paramount. However, what I can tell you is that the, when we did our due diligence on who you're dealing with, this is a set of experts who know how to manage the complexities of this population without unduly burdening local law enforcement. So I will say, I'm not looking to in any way say that things have been easy at Hampstead Hospital, although we have been three weeks without needing to call police for assistance. I think they're serving a really, really challenging group of young kids there, who luckily we don't have to ship far out of state, and we can support their communities locally. But as we get our feet under us at Hampstead, I think we're really learning from the experts in the field who you're dealing with tonight.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So I'd like to say thank you so much for coming to our quaint little town here in London Dairy. So would it be fair then to say, based on what you just said, that, that we have two separate and distinct facilities that, if nothing else, from an administrative standpoint is different, in structure is different? And that you have public versus private, which administratively many times is quite different in allowable or available resources? And so we really are almost talking apples and oranges, one to the other. Based on your training and experience, am I close?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I would call the distinction public versus private, I think, because I think there's a very public mission underlying this project. I think what I would say is different is, at Hampstead Hospital, we as a state purchased a facility that is very old, so you're talking about an old building that is not really designed for the most acute challenged kids, so just the physical facility. If I were to share any of the images that this team has shared with my Hampstead team, they would, I worry, I worry that they would, they would run away and want, want jobs solely at this facility, just because the physical facility was different. And I think the experience of bringing in an entity to partner with us to carry out the clinical services was different. So yes, this is a vulnerable, complex population. I think what I can say with confidence is that you have a team here who knows what they're doing. They know how to work with local resources and, and I think have experience they can share with you tonight across both, you know, with the joint ventures, having both Acadia in tens of thousands of facilities, and then Solution Health bringing their expertise, serving this population. You know, they, they have found a way to do this and to balance the needs for safety and calm and quiet while meeting the complex needs of the population. So, so, you know, we have a lot to learn, things will get better at Hampstead, but I think you can rest assured that this is going to be a highly qualified and sophisticated operation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair? Being on the council, I observed your statement during the rezoning request before the council, and I just wanted to give an overall thank you for your time. And I think that your backing of the program talks to the validity of what we're, what the community and what the organization is trying to do, so I wanted to say thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. Well, and I will say, you're, all of the people I have interacted with at these meetings and throughout these conversations, you've, you have fantastic ambassadors for this community, which is part of why I think a facility serving people in need would be so fortunate to, to be on their healing journey here, and for London Dairy to be seen as a real leader in the state for, for services that any of us or any of our family members could need any time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'll ask, here he comes. So as Tate's coming up to join me at the podium here, back to the proposal before you, of course, this is a site plan application for a behavioral health hospital that would be cited in your general business district. As the counselor just mentioned, the town council recently approved a zoning amendment that confirmed that hospitals would be in allowed use in the GB district, and of course, the planning board had a role in that by listening to the zoning proposal and recommending that it be approved by the council, which it then was. Dialing deeper even for this project, and not just a zoning level, the sighting of this facility is really ideal because the location on Innovation Way off Pettingill Road... facility is really ideal because the location on Innovation Way off Pettingill Road, excellent connectivity to arterial and state highways. It's nearby to public transportation, including the airport, and it has a decidedly non-residential area surrounding it. It's now heavily developed commercial corridor that we know and love to be Pettingill Road. And it's also important to explain that this proposed facility has some very important distinctions from other traditional hospitals. There's no emergency department. There's no helipad. There's no sirens. There's no all-night comings and goings with loud commotion. This facility would receive patients by private transport from other hospitals, medical centers, medical referrals, not by public ambulance, by private transport. Nobody just shows up at the door unannounced. They're expected and awaited by staff. Once patients are admitted, they're only discharged with a plan for continued treatment, service, case management. In other words, nobody signs themselves out and wanders off. As for management qualifications, you'll hear in a minute from Tate Curdy for Solution Health, that Acadia Healthcare is a nationally recognized provider of behavioral health services. They operate in 39 states nationwide, including Massachusetts. We've had numerous discussions with municipal departments as we prepared to go through the technical review process, then file our formal applications and come before you this evening. We've talked about a lot of different topics, specifically police and fire. Those discussions will continue both before, during, and after any approval that may result from our application before this board. But I'm pleased to tell you that all of the discussions were good-natured, welcoming, productive, and frankly, relevant to the details that this hospital presents, but also open to solutions that we know from other places and experiences can work. We're going to get into this in more detail on the technical side, but the staff memo does include a list of conditions of approval. I couldn't tell you that they're recommended by staff. I think staff is recommending a continuance, at least as far as their memo is concerned. But they did us the service very graciously of putting in a list of conditions that would serve as conditions of approval if we can get there tonight. And I'll tell you that the applicant has reviewed them and is comfortable with them. And, and so unless you have particular preliminary questions for me, it was my intention to introduce Tate Curdy, who's the chief operating officer of the Elliott Hospital, which is a member of Solution Health. Tate wants to share a few words about Solution Health's current behavioral health offering services and how partnering with Acadia makes them bigger, better, stronger. And I don't see anybody chomping at the bits, so I'll turn it over to Tate.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board and staff here tonight. As Ari mentioned, my name is Tate Curdy, the COO of Elliott Hospital, but I'm here on behalf of Solution Health, which is the combined effort of Southern New Hampshire Medical Center in Nashua and Elliott Hospital up in Manchester. We've been in the community close to 150 years each. We're in the town of Londonderry, just about a mile and a half down the road on Butrick. It was mentioned in the, in the previous comments, or the previous agenda item during the public comment section, about our willingness to work and our ability to work with the town in the past. We continue, we aspire to continue to that here tonight and moving forward. The commissioner said it quite well, this really is a potential to be a difference-maker. We think that this historical moment could really turn the tide with respect to behavioral health services in the state, and we're deeply, deeply committed to this initiative. I guess if I were to hone in on just one singular point with you tonight is this: we are absolutely committed to doing this right. And that means with full considerations of staff's concerns and the process, we don't do this specific thing very often. We deliver healthcare every day, 365 days a year. So we're very pleased to work with the professionals of the town to make sure that we get all your answers, question, or all your questions answered, to make sure that you can honor your responsibilities to the community, as we seek to do that through our mission. The last thing I would like to just add is that we are providing psychiatric care services, inpatient psychiatric care services right now. We do that in both Elliott Hospital and on the west campus, on the west side of Nashua at Southern New Hampshire Medical Center. What this facility will allow us to do is to do more of that, better, in a consolidated facility that's contemporary, contemporarily designed with a top-flight national operator in Acadia Healthcare. And that's what we're endeavoring to do. So I know I'm the last person standing between you and the, and the engineering and architectural experts who are really, you know, capable of addressing some of the, the concerns that are particularly germane to this group, but I can tell you from an organizational perspective and a mission perspective, we are 100% in, in, 100% supportive of this group and this project, and we will be through its ongoing launch and maintenance. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions directly for, on behalf of Solution and its member institutions, or we can pivot to the architects and engineers.
Board, do you have any questions?
Okay.
Keep moving.
Mr. Chair, I think I have to recuse myself. My wife works at Solution.
Absolutely. Can we take note that Jason has recused himself?
Sure.
And I don't believe, we have one alternate, we can, we can appoint Mr. D to vote in Jason's place.
I'm going to give up my seat for the architectural and engineering discussion, but I'll come back whenever you miss me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer with Heiner Swanson, Inc., doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. With me is Chip Hill with Stengel Hill. Chip joins us from Louisville, Kentucky this evening. What we're going to try to do is present the facts of the project. Given the hour, I'll try to be informative and both expeditious at the same time. And then I'll turn it over to, I'll turn it over to Chip to talk a little bit about the buildings. And of course, I, as always, will lean on Kelly to help me with, with the aerials and the visuals. Just to make sure everybody knows where we are, we're at the corner of Innovation Way in Pettingill. There are two lots that total 35 acres in size. Bless you. And as Ari said, 30, and as Ari said, we are located in the gateway business zone. When you look at the yellow border of our property, you can see some familiar buildings that, about our property. Milton Cat to the north, Kluber, under construction. Tesla to the east. Bella Vance Beverage across Pettingill. FedEx, you can catch a corner of that building. There's Pro Lodges, EFI, and of course, New Balance is under construction. The property itself, our client has an option on the property that's currently owned by the Tamposy Nash interests. This is formerly part of that part of town that for many years was used as a sand and gravel removal operation. And as you can tell with the aerials, the site has been worked in the past and contains a combination of kind of scrubby ground growth as well as some wooded areas. It's a little deceiving, but there is about a 25-foot grade change from Pettingill Road to the north. Soil conditions are, are quite sandy, gravels blasting is not anticipated for this project. We hired, as we normally do, a wetland consultant. She walked the property. There are no wetlands in the main body of the site, but along the northeasterly property line, there is a water course that runs in the middle of it. And some board members may recall that when the airport connector road was built, the New Hampshire DOT took several conservation easements. When we call up the site plan, I'll show you that easement, but that exists over in the northeast corner of the property, and that water course eventually flows north into Loco Hasbrook. Kelly, if you would go to the site plan, please. So we have filed a formal application for a site plan as well as a conditional use permit. I want to talk about just a couple key elements of the project. The building itself is a one-story building measuring about 88,870 square feet in size. Chip's going to talk in much more detail about the building, but generally inside the building are offices, meeting and training rooms, inpatient rooms, outpatient treatment rooms, group therapy rooms. There's a gymnasium, a dining area, and we have outdoor activity areas. The facility is expected to have 192 beds, and Tate just mentioned to be staff of approximately 200 people. It is a Monday through Sunday, 24/7 operation. Access is off of Innovation Way, no access off of Pettingill. Two driveways. The site plan represents two parking areas for visitors and employees of 245 parking spaces. We have a small loading area, Mr. Chairman, on the north side of the building away from Pettingill Road, but very few truck trips to this facility. It might just be a food truck on a weekly basis. We are showing paved access behind the entire building for life safety access. I mentioned the grade change across the site. It posed quite a challenge because this very long building wants to be flat. And so when you have 25 feet of grade change, you've got to have some cuts and some fills. And we accomplished that along that, along that loop road around the back with a, with a retaining wall. And that allows us to make grade, but it also allows us to protect the 100-foot conservation easement, which you can now see on the northeasterly part of the site. Underground utilities will service the facility. We did identify in the northern part of the building an opportunity for potential future access, I'm sorry, potential future building addition if, if ever needed. Stormwater, two surface type practices to accommodate post-development runoff, a combination of forbays and really detention surface practices. The basins are designed in accordance with the town standards and New Hampshire DES standards. And overall, we're providing both qualitative and quantitative treatment of stormwater off this site. A traffic study was done for the development by Vanessan Associates. And really what they did was estimate trips generated by the project to see if there are any impacts. We learned a lot about traffic in the last case, so I'll be, I'll be quite brief with traffic, but in the AM peak, 35, 35 trips, in the PM peak, 29 trips. I do want to remind the board that the Innovation Way intersection is slated for some improvements as part of the New Balance project, and that should, should facilitate improved level of service at that intersection. That report concluded that the project is a minor traffic generator and that adequate capacity exists in the local roads for the development. Next, John Kelly, just a couple quick comments. Landscaping plans have been provided, some 131 trees, over 2,900 shrubs. The Londonderry code speaks to open space within these paved parking areas, and we comply with those requirements. Quite often, I'm before you asking for open space waivers on these parking areas for these industrial buildings, but we're able to, to introduce enough open space in those parking areas. The ground cover will be a combination of a conservation wildlife mix on the outer edges and then, and then mowed lawn in the front near the building. Our site lighting does include photometrics. It's all LED downcast lighting, no spillover onto abutting properties. And very quickly on signage, we comply with site signage and building signage. Once you see some of the perspectives, you'll see the building-mounted sign as well as the, the ground sign. Mr. Chairman, you're fortunate to proceed. The hope is to break ground in the summer of 2024. It takes about 15 to 16 months to construct the facility. Like to be fully functioning in the fall of 2025. Part of our application includes a conditional use permit. I'd like to very quickly describe what that is involved in that. As I mentioned, we have no wetlands in the main body of the site. We have no wetland impacts, but the water course in the conservation DOT easement carries with it a 50-foot buffer. And in a couple instances, that buffer creeps out past the DOT easement into our site. And so we have a minor disturbance of 2,600 square feet to impact to construct the retaining wall on the east side. And there's an old outdated drainage structure that leads into the brook that was there as part of the sand gravel operation. It's in need of being fixed up.
And that's small 700 square foot.
Yeah, and that's 700 feet. And that's represented, sir, in the plan set. I have the criteria for conditional use. It's up to you if you'd like me to paraphrase and quickly go through that criteria. It is included more formally in our application, but for the record, I'll, I'll just very quickly go through it. Four, four points needed for conditional use. The first is the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of the land. The area outside the conservation overlay district is needed for construction, really to meet the development program of the facility, the unique building state, shape, the parking areas, the stormwater areas, access around the building. So we are fully utilizing the land for that purpose. Subsequently, we have two very, very minor buffer impacts. Point number two, the design and construction materials will be such to minimize impacts on the wetlands and include restoration that's consistent with the permitted use. We have no wetland impacts. We do have conservation overlay impacts. We're going to great lengths with that retaining wall on the east side to prevent any, any significant buffer or wetland impacts. And so we believe we've done our best to minimize those impacts. Point three, no possible or feasible alternative route on the land controlled by the applicant that does not cross the conservation overlay district, has no less detrimental impact to the wetlands. There really is no reasonable alternative for us to avoid those areas. We're, we're surrounded by Pettingill Road to the south, Innovation Way to the west, and the DOT conservation easement along the east. So we, we really have no alternatives other than those two minor impacts. And then lastly, economic advantage is not the sole reason for the location. As Tate and, and the assistant director mentioned earlier, this is such an important facility and how its location is central to the state of New Hampshire, and that's really the, the reason this site was located. I do have four waivers. I don't know, John, should I address those or introduce those to you? Is that okay, Mr. Chairman? I would say there are four minor waivers. The first is to waive the traffic demand management sustainable, kind of requiring these measures. We, we're not going to be a lead-certified building, but we have a number of elements that are, are green initiatives, increased open space, qualitative and quantitative stormwater practices, a white roof, with the ability for rooftop solar units. They won't be installed, but we, we have the ability for that. High-efficiency light fixtures, LED lighting, and limited, limited site irrigation. And so it's a waiver that we've been successful in obtaining on many other buildings in this part of the, in this part of town. Waiver number two has to do with the required section, pavement section. The town requires three inches of pavement, six inches of gravel, 12 inches of crushed gravel. We hire a, a geotechnical engineer to come out and examine the soil and prepare a report that gives us that section based on the soils. And it's slightly different, but it's certainly in accordance with, with industry standards. So we're seeking a waiver of your formal requirement there. Section 4.12(c)(19) Roman numeral seven, to waive the location of locating any 15-inch diameter trees on the site. There's very sparse growth out there now. If I were a betting man, I would say there aren't that many trees out there that exceed 15 inches. But within the development area, they're being cleared. And then, of course, within the conservation area, they're not being touched at all. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, is the plan scale. Couple of our site plan sets have a reduced plan scale just to keep it all on one sheet. One other point I'd like to discuss, and it's a matter that, that arose today. We work very hard with town staff and to be as bulletproof as we can when we sit before this board. We're pretty darn close. The conditions of approval that I read are very fair. They're very reasonable. I think I, I aired in one of my responses, and it didn't completely satisfy Mr. Trotter. I spoke with him today about it. It has to do with the ability of Innovation Way to grow and to make sure we're not putting any elements next to Innovation Way that would prevent Innovation Way from being blinded. We had two stormwater practices there. I spoke with Mr. Trotter late today. We have the ability to shift those locations. I committed to Mr. Trotter that we could make that happen, and I think he was comfortable with that response. I won't put words into his mouth. But I think that that was really the only major kind of issue that we have outstanding. And And again, I pledged to him that I think it's one that we could easily work with. The other conditions, again, are fair and are normal and typical. You know, we have nine conditions. I look back, New Balance had 20 conditions of approval, so I think we're slightly better off. So with that, that's my presentation. I will be available and happy to answer any questions, but at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Chip to talk about some colored graphics we have on some building elevations. Thank you, Kelly.
Chip?
One quick clarification. The current project scope is 144 beds. The future expansion, if and when it were to occur, would take it up to 192 beds. We do have colored elevations in here that are, basically the materials are all denoted there, but it's probably best to go to the first of the perspectives. It's a little easier to understand. Let's get one more. Quickly here, though, on signage, as Jim mentioned, we have two illuminated signs on the, in the project, we have a monument sign at the main entrance from Innovation Way, and we have an on-building illuminated sign on the front elevation. Both of those are sized at 100 square feet per ordinance. We do also have, yeah, that's good, we can start here. The front facade of the building is a combination of two colors of metal panels around the primary entry points, and they're flanked by a stone weight scoot and a cap with face brick above that extends to 12 feet, and then there's an ephesus system above that. This brick stone and ephesus aesthetic extends down the front facade and down and around the corner of the gymnasium building that you see off to the lower right of the front facade. The other facades, the sides and rear of the building consist of a brick weight scoot with a stone cap with a top of 30 inches and a two-tone ephesus system above that. The tallest portion of the front facade, just to give you an idea about the scale of this building, is at the on-building signage portion of the facade, and it's 24 feet in height. And then the tallest portion of the building on campus is the peak of the gymnasium roof, which is at 32 feet. We do have, on the lower left-hand corner of the upper right view, a service yard with a 14-foot-high dumpster and emergency generator enclosure with brick veneer that matches the front facade. And we also have around the rear of the facility, 14-foot-tall walls around exterior activity yards. As you look at the massing of the building, kind of the hub-and-spoke fingers that you see on the back are individual nursing units, they're each 24-bed nursing units, and each one of those nursing units has a dedicated exterior activity yard for patient recreation. And this allows us to treat a variety of different patient populations and keep them properly separated within the facility.
If I'm looking at this right, do I see to the left of the gymnasium, is that an ambulance bay?
That's our transport entrance, that's correct, yes. So they can bring any patients coming, most of the patients coming to this facility will come from regional emergency departments, and that's the main area where they come into the facility.
Thank you.
The overall massing of the building, the front building that you see, houses administrative spaces such as our admissions department, the administrative complement, support services, kind of the back of the house, maintenance and electrical mechanical rooms, dietary, and as well as outpatient services. We have a couple of different outpatient programs that are essentially a step-down service for the inpatient care, or somebody would be discharged and then they would come back for group therapy on a recurring basis in the front portion of the facility. The gymnasium and activity therapy building on the bottom right-hand corner there of the upper left-hand view houses a half-basketball court gym and also some activity therapy spaces for, for instance, exercise therapy, art therapy, and the therapists that care for the patients there. The main hospital entrance is at the vehicular canopy that you see at the main entrance. And then we, as we mentioned, we have direct entrances from the exterior for the outpatient programs at the front of the building. And then our loading entrance and service entrance is off to the left-hand side as well. We do have a fire apparatus access road around the perimeter of the campus to meet the code requirements for that. And we did mention the exterior activity yards. Let's go to the next view, too. Just a couple of close-ups. You can see the solution, SWF Solution Health branded facility. The signage is on the front facade in the upper left-hand view, and then just the upper right-hand view is kind of an evening view of the main entrance canopy, and then the lower left-hand view is just a little closer view of the entire front facade of the facility.
So before we turn it back to Ari for some concluding remarks, Mr. Chair, both Chip and I'd be happy to answer. I know we went through a lot of information there in a short period, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Does the board want to ask any questions, or do we want to hear from Ari, and then we'll go to staff and come over to the board? Yep, I agree. Ari, come on up.
Okay, if I speak from here?
Absolutely.
Super. Yeah, real quick, I just want to reiterate that we're, what we're asking for is conditional approval of the site plan, approval of the conditional use permit for the buffer impact. And I want to make specific reference to the conditions of approval that are included in the staff memo. Again, not necessarily their recommendation, but included for the board's consideration. And in particular, I wanted to point out item number one, which is some language that we've worked on as the applicant and the town and the town's attorney has worked on for your consideration, which relates specifically to the Londonary Police Department and some concerns that they'd brought forward about how to support this facility in the community. We don't have specifics here, but what we have here is an agreement, a region agreement, and a timeline associated with the signing of plans to get that agreement done. And to put it differently, we don't want to have the negotiation occur right here, right now, but we know that it's important, we're committing to it, and this condition is something that we're very familiar with and aware of and accepting of. As you move down this list, you'll get to item two, which talks about the more technical memorandum from the Planning and Economic Development Department, and the particular items that Jim were mentioning about Innovation Way are pointed out in that memo. So if you were inclined to do a conditional approval this evening, you would not be passing on those issues. They are included, they are important, they need to be completed before any plans can be signed. And you always have the catch-all at the end of the list, which is final engineering review, which we know would include John's sign-off anyhow. So we're not looking for a pass on anything, we're just looking to get through this hurdle so that frankly, we can start any appeal clock that may apply to this approval and keep both our cellar, let's not forget, we haven't closed yet, and you heard from the Assistant Commissioner, there's a lot of money on the table. We need to keep all of these various stakeholders happy enough so that we can collect everything we need when we pass go. Thank you very much.
So before we go to our public hearing, I want to get some staff input here. We'll go through the board, see what the board has to say about the plan. I know we've got some representatives from police and fire here, if they've got anything they'd like to talk about. But let's start with John, if you have anything.
Yeah, again, I'll just go through the waivers, and I'm going to be very brief with the engineering comments. Waiver number one, the applicant is requesting a waiver from Londonary Zoning Ordinance 4.5.2.1 relating to transportation demand management, sustainable site and building design requirements. Per the Londonary Zoning Ordinance, the planning board may waive the requirements of Section 4.5.1.2, where it is shown that there are standards, that these standards impose an unreasonable burden on the development of property within the GB district. Please see the attached justification from the applicant regarding these standards. Second waiver request was to Londonary Site Plan Regulations, Section 3.09-K2I, Roman N2, relating to driveway pavement design and construction cross-sections. Staff does support the waiver request. As Jim indicated, this is based on a geotechnical study that was performed on the site. Third waiver request was from waiver, from Londonary Site Plan Regulations 4.01(c) relating to plan scale for the existing conditions plan, erosion control plan, site-specific soils map. Staff does support waiver request, allows the depiction of the entire site in one single view. Lastly was the request from waiver to Londonary Site Plan Regulation 4.12(c)(19)8 relating to identifying existing trees greater than 15 inches in diameter. Staff supports the waiver request due to the, as Jim indicated, due to the previous clearing of the site. Such trees do not exist, except probably within the conservation easement located to the north and northeast of the site. I'm not going to, with the lateness of the night, I'm not going to go verbatim by the comments, but Jim hit it right on the head. There was some disagreement about, or again, I had some extreme concerns about, there's an easement along Innovation Way. I'm probably the only guy that's been around long enough to understand when we bawdered for that easement. The idea of that easement was if, in the, was number one, to create Innovation Way, number two, if we ever had to expand it. The wording and the deed isn't very clear. It says a tomb lane road, but let's, we all know what's happening up at Pettingill Road, so let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, I guess you call it? Whatever the hell that saying is. So Jim and I, we've come to an agreement this afternoon, and I said I would agree with him if he said it in public. He said it in public, we're going to work, he'll work with us, and Ari's assured us, and so I feel comfortable that we can work it out.
Yes. For your record, we will stipulate that we will sit with John and staff post-approval as a condition to work out accommodations for that roadway. I would wholeheartedly agree that the easements and planning there are not clear, and that I think we can probably improve upon what right now is a little bit of an ambiguity.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to highlight again what Ari mentioned about the condition number one, which references an MOU. The town, along with the police and fire and town council, have worked with the applicant and Ari to develop this condition as well as to continue working on this MOU agreement.
Can you just give MOU for the public?
Memorandum of understanding.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate some comments I made on the previous application, those types of agreements are between the town and the applicant, the town meaning the town council. So I would encourage the board to ask questions of police or fire, they're both represented here this evening, but the intent is not to get into the details of that MOU at this time, but to just ensure that if this is conditionally approved, that that MOU is agreed upon by the town.
All right, I'll go through the boards. Anybody have any questions?
Well, I'd like to say something. When the lady who was speaking before you folks, she described a situation in an emergency room, a cardiac patient. That could have been me last January. I was in Elliot's emergency room in a bed, but I was next door to a patient who was out of control. There were four police officers there watching over him, and he must have been restrained to the bed because I just, all I could hear all the time was noises coming from there and him not getting up or anything like that. So I assumed he was some type of restraint with the police officers there. So I totally see the need for this. So I'm wondering if I should be stepping down because I personally, you know, experienced that, and I thought that there should be a place for people who have issues to go, to be able to go into.
And I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Yes, I don't see any conflict whatsoever, and I think your information is helpful.
Okay.
I would put on for the record, the applicant has no objection. Every board member has personal circumstance that they bring to the, to the table, and while I'm sorry that you had that experience, it, in my view, is not a conflict.
Well, the next time I was in there, I didn't have that experience. So hopefully that portion of my life is over. But anyways, I just, I was thinking about the police officers, the amount of police officers that were there. I didn't know if that was typical or whatever. So I just hope that the security is there with this structure and, and staff, and you'd be able to have enough of staff to cover everything because, you know, today's employment world.
Right. So at some point, you're going to hit upon something that I can't answer, and that's why Miles Kramer from Acadia made the trip up. But this one I can, simply to say that these facilities, they are therapeutic in nature, they are not a penitentiary or an incarceration facility. People are patients on medical orders, they are discharged on medical orders, and they are in a therapeutic environment while they are a resident of the facility. And these facilities also are very heavily regulated by the state of New Hampshire, both in terms of how they're laid out, how they're engineered, how they're operated, and how they're staffed with staffing ratios. And so the rules are very specific, they must be followed, and there are consequences if they are not. And Acadia is accustomed to those rules in all the places where they operate.
Okay. And again, just because of the number of officers, I'm not sure how the police would be integrated into this. So I'd like to know more about that, maybe not right now, but...
Yeah, I'm sure that the chief will share his views, but I can tell you that on a day-to-day operational basis, there should be no involvement from Londonary Police. The facility is designed to be self-standing and self-sufficient. There could certainly be a 911 call from staff or from a patient supervised by staff. There certainly could be service of process to deliver to somebody who is there as a patient or an employee. Typical functions of the police department all across town, regardless of a facility, but we are not asking to partner with them on operational issues. They are emergency response.
Okay, now, do you admit visitors to the facility for the patients?
We do, and there are rules for those people as well, as to how they present themselves, how they sign in, how they sign out, how they are supervised, and whether or not visitation is part of the medical orders for a particular patient.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. D., I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to hear from police and fire safety services that they are or are not comfortable negotiating an MOU after we pass this along. So in other words, if we, if we don't continue it as the applicant is asking us not to do, I'm wondering if those two are okay with that part of it.
And I'm sure that everyone wants to talk about this, but I just wanted to read to you a portion of what the staff has suggested as a condition, which is applicant us acknowledges that conditional approval, conditional approval of the site plan is being granted without an agreed-upon MOU in consideration of applicant's desire for prompt consideration of its application. Should applicant and the town be unable to come to an agreement satisfactory to the town, this condition shall remain unsatisfied, which of course means our plan doesn't get signed, and we really don't have an approval.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. That certainly is helpful, and, but I would still like to hear from police and fire safety as well.
Hundred percent. I'm getting out of the way now.
Thank you.
With that, John, you looked like you wanted to come up before I asked police and fire to come up.
So the way the question is phrased is, is the police and the fire department are not negotiating the MOU. The MOU is being negotiated by the town council and our legal counsel in consultation with the fire chief and the police chief. They are fully abreast and aware of everything we're talking about, and I am very confident from the standpoint of being the person from the council who is leading the negotiation that they will, we will either meet the needs of police and fire, or there will not be an MOU.
Mr. Chair, in light of that additional information, I remove my request to hear from fire and police.
Okay. I know I kind of skipped over you. Do you have anything?
Well, I think it's a, I think it's a, there's a huge need for this type of facility. It's a good location. But I do think some of these items are fairly large items that they have to work through. And my opinion, I think they should work through those items before they give them conditional approval.
Lynn?
Nothing at this time, but I would like to hear from the chief at some point in time.
Yeah, absolutely. I think I'll get through the board, and then I'll ask you guys to come up.
I think the critical thing is in my mind, and it'll be part of the memorandum of understanding, is the relationship between your security and the police so that they, because essence that they work together, it should be really a team. So I don't know, the verbiage, and I'm sure the legal aspects of it would put something together so that we are assured that if there's really a problem, you know, our police are certainly a part of it. Have to mention, the Heritage Commission was very happy with the architecture and the landscaping, and... landscaping, and, hold on, I don't really have anything else, Mr. Chair.
John?
I'm all set.
Yeah? Couple quick questions on, you spoke on some lawn irrigation. Is that throughout the site? Is it in specific areas? What does that look like?
Generally, it's limited to kind of that front door, that front look, and maybe some along the entrance drive. When you invest so much in trees, you know, trees kind of need water to get going those first two years, but a good majority of this outer perimeter is that conservation-wildlife mix that will not be irrigated. So it's a.
Will those courtyards, if you will, heavily walked, traveled areas, will those be irrigated?
Those courtyard areas are a combination of hard surface for the outdoor rec, and in some instances, there's almost like a field turf or an AstroTurf product in the side, and then there's a couple that are, are grassed as well, yes.
So there's a synthetic aspect?
Some of them are synthetic, yes.
I, I, I would like to hear from the police and fire, you know, you spoke earlier on providing services to, to people in the state that need it, and I think everybody absolutely agrees with that. My concern comes to what the services that might be needed from, from our, our departments and making sure that, that they're, they can handle whatever may be coming this way. So if you guys want to start, D., and tell us how you feel about it, and we'll go from there.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna stand.
Been sitting long enough?
Good evening. Sir?
You've been sitting long enough?
I've been sitting long enough. I sit an awful lot.
I've been sitting for seven innings stretch, I think, this hearing.
We'll stand. First off, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I just want to publicly say to the team over here from Arcadia Solutions and Mr. Pollack's firm and whatnot, so far, our experience in dealing with them has been very cooperative, collaborative, and so far, smooth sailing. The questions that always arise when something like this comes up that we have seen over the years is, what is the impact to public safety? Well, when we first heard this come to be back in January at one of the budget town council meetings, when they were talking about changing the zoning to allow the word hospital to come in this part of town, thereafter, within several days, the deputy chief and I got our team together, six lieutenants, and we thought about what this impact could be. We've been working on this for a couple months behind the scenes. We know what those impacts could be. We've been working on them, we have plans in place for those impacts, and as you had mentioned, the Elliot Hospital Emergency Room, they do have Manchester Police Department there on a detail to provide safety for patients and for staff. So my guess there is that they had somebody who was in need of some restraints and called the police for whatever reason, but I, I do.
Just to be clear, that, that's a paid detail?
Manchester, yeah. So that's how Manchester conducts their business. And again, I always say this, I don't care what Manchester does, I don't care what state police does, all I care about is our town. This is what you folks pay me to do, and have me in the position to do is think of these things. So I like to forecast, I get all these things figured out, I know what's gonna happen, I know what's gonna come. But I just want to reiterate again that so far, we've been having great dialogue. I, I think what has been discussed on limited scope with the MOU is fine with me. That's out of my wheelhouse. But what I can tell you folks is that we are on it, we're working together as a team, and I don't see any issues at this moment.
Do you have any idea what, what an anticipated level of calls, if you will, to a facility like this looks like?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's, that's a good question. So generally speaking, when anything new comes to town, we try to see what the impact would be, what types of calls for service. We all talk about when, when new apartment buildings get built, what's the impact gonna be on the schools, things of this nature. So in any hospital like the Elliot, any hospital such as this, anything like a Home Depot, when Home Depot came to town, same, same traffic issues we talked about before, the traffic issues. We knew back then, we're gonna have accidents in parking lots, we were gonna deal with thefts, we were gonna deal with loss prevention, trying to prevent somebody leaving, then being assaulted by someone stealing from them. We understand those things come, we understand that there's medical calls that happen. It's the same thing with, with this facility. I don't know the extent of what calls for service are gonna come, but as it was touched on lightly earlier, anything can happen from assaults to 911 hangups to parking lot crashes and other, other issues that arise in any business of this magnitude.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the chief?
I do. What questions do you wish you were asked? What would you like to cover that might not have been asked by the board?
I don't actually have one, sir, at this moment from the board that hasn't been asked. Again, you know, we've, we've been working behind the scenes here on this for some time now, so I think we're on the same page, and all the questions I have had have been diligently asked, and I'm satisfied to this moment with the response.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Chair.
No problem. Thank you. And so just to confirm, and obviously we have a very limited scope on this MOU, as Kelly has, has talked about, but, but you are comfortable with the, the direction that this has been moving in, and, and they've been very supportive to, and open to dialogue to what, what's been discussed.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the chief? Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If we could have a representative from the fire department come up as well?
Good evening.
Mr. Johnson, how are you, sir?
Good, and you? I don't like to speak for my chief, but I'd like to just reiterate something, some, pretty much some of the same wording that the police said with the MOU. I haven't been personally involved in that, but I know our chief has been working with them, and he's happy with the progress. As far as what I have dealt with, the developers, we've had multiple meetings, Zoom meetings, things like that. They have been very forthcoming, very easy to work with. Any concern we had has been addressed very quickly. You know, they've been more than willing to work with the fire department on whatever our needs are. As you were discussing, like, call volume, Assistant Chief Fred Heinrich did do some research about other facilities around the area of this size and this nature. What he came up with is, on average, those facilities have about two calls a month, whether it be a medical call, a fire alarm activation, something like that. So it's not a huge burden on the department. I mean, obviously, any call volume added on is a burden, but it's not like some of the apartment complexes where we're there, you know, sixty, seventy times, you know, within a month, you know?
Absolutely.
So it's not, you know, what we're looking at in comparison is not gonna be a big burden on the department. They have been very willing to work with us. Any, like I said, any questions we had have been answered very thoroughly, and it seems like a facility, you know, that, at least in the planning stages, they're willing to work with us on all the needs for the town, what we look at on the fire department side.
Thank you. So two calls a mon, you said two calls a month?
Correct.
So it's twenty-four calls a year. What's your call volume right now?
Our call volume right now, last year was four thousand four hundred and forty-four.
Who's counting, right?
Yeah.
So you're looking at less than one percent, if, if I'm, if my math serves me, serves me right. Thank you, Brian, and I, I think to your point, you know, facilities like this would probably see the police department more often than they would see the, the fire department, whereas when we get into things, bigger multi-unit developments, residential developments, stuff like that, I'm sure that's where you really see.
That, we see a much larger impact.
Absolutely, absolutely. Does anybody have anything for Chief Johnson?
Last same question, if I can.
Absolutely.
Any questions that you wish you were asked, or anything that you'd like to add?
Not really, 'cause, like I said, we have had a very open line of communication with them. Anything that we have addressed, they have answered quickly, thoroughly. So everything that we've come up so far, and like I said, there's always the unknown, we don't have this type of facility in town, so there's always gonna be questions coming down the line. But so far, anything that we've had, they've been very willing to answer, and, you know, even if, like, minor changes, they're, you know, willing to work with us. And also, because this is a hospital, the State Fire Marshal's Office will also be involved in the plans review process, inspection process, and licensing for them as well.
So if I hear you correctly, you would say that the responsiveness has been very high?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
We are gonna open up the public hearing now. Like every hearing we have, we give the public an opportunity to come up and speak, so I will open up the hearing. Anybody wanna come up? How you doing, sir?
Good evening. My name's Dave Robbins, 532 Mammoth Road, Londonderry. Couple of quick questions. So there's an expansion possibility for this for one hundred and ninety-two beds? Is that what I heard? We're starting off at one forty-four, potentially?
Correct. Right now, it is one hundred forty-four, but if you look at the plan, if you're looking down on the plan, I believe it's kind of the left side of it, there is a wing to expand.
So does, will Arcadia and Solutions Health be doing any kind of community services with this? Is there any community outreach to the homeless for addiction counseling, things of that nature? Is this really going to be kind of for-profit? This is where folks in need of mental health care from emergency rooms with insurance or money will go to. Is, is there any kind of community outreach involved in this?
I'd like to have you just, so we don't have two of you up here at once, if you could go through your questions?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
And I'll have them answered after that.
Okay. So I have a few concerns. I, as torn as I am about this project, I, I agree completely, we need, we need that mental health, expand mental health, we need, we need better services in New Hampshire, which is, actually becomes a much larger problem. One of my first concerns is the location, although I, I like it, it's kind of in a commercial area, it's, it's, it's separated. It's not an area that I think needs a lot of law enforcement interaction for the most part. There's a lot of manufacturing and things like that, it goes to bed at night, and there's nobody out there, really. So what will, is this gonna be an area now that's gonna need a patrol? Because this is pretty far removed in the far northeast corner. So, you know, again, and I know we talked about Hampstead Hospital being kind of apples and oranges, I get it, it's, it's, it's the same but different. It's still gonna, it's still gonna, it represents a potential strain on the community, depending on what it's gonna do to emergency services, to law enforcement, and how it's handled. One of the, so as I'm watching the stuff with Hampstead Hospital, I started asking myself, why, why do we have such an issue with this? So as, there was a woman that was interviewed on WMUR, and she was leaving Hampstead Hospital because she had a master's degree as a mental health counselor, and she was making fifty-five thousand dollars a year. I don't know where she lives, right? I mean, that, that's kind of a problem. So I started digging into it a little bit, and, so although she may, maybe she was new, but still, the average pay for a mental health counselor with a master's degree in the state of New Hampshire is sixty-five grand. It's ten thousand dollars less than the national, national average. And, you know, we don't have a cheap, you know, cost of living around here, I think, as we all know. So I'm not sure where the employees are gonna come from, and when it comes to securing the building, that makes it even worse, because they're, they're paid less. Securities, you know, doesn't make you any money. Let's, remember, this is a for-profit institution, this is a for-profit company. Security doesn't make you any money, so, you know, that's always the first place that gets cut. So I would, I would be careful about that. So is, I don't think we need to reevaluate the wheel when we're talking about this facility, right? I mean, Arcadia's a big company. You know, they got two hundred plus, two hundred and fifty-plus locations in thirty-nine states. Has law enforcement, fire, EMS reached out to other communities serviced by Arcadia and found out what kind of member of the community are they? Do they have a big strain on services? What are those strains on services? What were the after-effects? Did we need additional training for our first responders that are showing up there? Do we need additional equipment? You know, and these are all things that, when we look at the project on the outside, you know, it looks great, it's really tax-positive, until five years down the road, and all of a sudden, we realize we have three new law enforcement offices, three new paramedics, you know, and we've had to add all these other services to the, to the community. And I think, as we've seen, you know, from the prior, you know, the traffic control before, eventually, we hit the wall, right? And someone's gotta pay the bill, the bill comes due. So I think we need to address this. In, you know, in the, in the worst-case scenario, not properly staffed, this could become a burden on Londonderry, you know, and, and in the worst case, I could even see this becoming an issue where it becomes a problem for recruiting law enforcement. I mean, Londonderry PD's done a great job recruiting, recruiting officers in a difficult hiring environment in the last few years. You know, if we start introducing things that, you know, maybe someone looks at and says, eh, this is a problem in Londonderry, I see it on the news anymore, I might not wanna work there. You know, so, you know, in, in closing, I think we need to be careful. Again, Arcadia is a big company. Two hundred and fifty-plus locations, thirty-nine states, seven billion dollars in market capitalization, they're not gonna answer to the town of Londonderry once this is built. They answer to stockholders and the board of directors. So we need to make sure that we get out ahead of this. If we need additional services, let's address it before it's approved, let's address it before we get going, because afterwards, we're not gonna be able to do it. So thank you for your time, guys, appreciate it.
See, I see one of our town councilors here, I'm gonna let him talk in a minute. I think he's gonna be able to answer a few of your questions, and then the gentleman from Arcadia Health, I saw you shaking your head up and down when he was, when he was talking, so I'd like to have you come up after that. Mr. Farrell?
So John Farrell from the town council. As the person leading that negotiation for the, on the MOU, yes, we have taken all of that in consideration, yes, we have asked all those questions, yes, we have all that information, yes, we have taken it very seriously, yes, we believe the same thing, we have negotiated now, not later. So the answer to all your questions is yes.
Sir, if you could come up, I believe it was on.
Outreach.
Yeah.
Outreach.
It had to do with patient outreach. Community outreach.
Members of the board, Miles Kramer from Arcadia Healthcare. Patient outreach and, and kind of community involvement is a huge part of every one of these hospitals. So behavioral health is, is not just local, it's very much relational, and the foundation of this hospital will be a lot of the staff that are currently at the Elliot in Southern New Hampshire coming into this new hospital, bringing with them their experience in the community, their place in the community, and that community culture. Very formally, we do a lot of integration with schools as far as teen suicide prevention and, and education around mental health issues, identification with caregivers for children and adolescents. This facility will have a child and adolescent unit. We do the same thing with older adult outreach agencies, things like Area Agency on Aging, and however that's configured in this community. We will work with law enforcement and first responders every day, and so not only do we kind of offer support and training for them and for their families, but we are committed to being the, the partner that they need. Obviously, when you have a, a bunch of folks in the community that are in a place that's getting care, we, we are gonna need some of their resources, and so we are committed to being that partner, not that drain on those resources. I think additionally, it's, it's important to, to point out that we, we have a big facility here that has a lot of ability to do other things. We have a gym facility that often hosts community events, not just things like twelve-step meetings, but often things like twelve-step meetings, or other community events that are, are kind of on top, or will maybe rent out that facility, usually donate it out, but may use the facility as part of the, the community resources in addition to the staff that we have. We want to attract a higher level of mental health professionals that may do training at the area hospitals, or may do teaching in the community, may have private practices where they're serving other types of patients that the facility serves. But to, to wrap it up, I think you can't do behavioral health without working with all sorts of different folks, whether that's a pastor leading a small twelve-step group in the basement of their church, all the way through other agencies that provide counseling and drug and alcohol services and residential services, and everything that's out there will be kind of a, a connection point for the hospital.
Thank you. Anything?
Well, in that, in that regard, are you gonna put lanes around the track and start starting blocks, so when I go there and train, I can get all the way around the building and know how far I've gone?
So we.
Don't answer that question.
We really should have brought.
Don't answer the question.
That's actually gonna be.
Please, please don't answer.
One motorcycle track.
Please, please don't answer.
That's kind of, that's kind of one of the things we'll, yeah.
That's not in the MOU.
Welcome to run.
And I will say, before we move on to more public comment, back to some of the things you've said. Um. you've said, that's why we have police and fire here, to make sure that they are comfortable with everything that's going on, they're comfortable with how Arcadia's worked with them. You've heard from Mr. Farrell, who's been working directly involved in this MOU, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable saying we're certainly in the right direction, given what, what, you know, the leadership of our two departments have said, that, hey, they're comfortable.
So I guess, I, again, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. Like I said, this is a big company, they serve a lot of other communities.
Yep.
So I mean, if we talk to those other communities, you get an idea of, you know, what the impact is going to be.
Absolutely.
Right? So, like I said, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, the wheel exists, we just need to go get it.
Absolutely. Chief, I see you standing.
I can, I can promise you that your chief has done everything that you've suggested, and has done an outstanding job, and his staff has done a detailed investigation, and has done, has turned over every rock and asked every question.
Chief?
So in our, in our research, we reached out to communities that Arcadia has facilities in that are of like size to ours, to find out those numbers, those two calls a month, to get that data. Because if we looked at communities bigger than ours, then the impact obviously is different. So we, we looked at their facilities that were in communities of our size, to figure out exactly what that impact would be, to then be able to say this is how it would affect us, in doing our research.
Great. Thank you, chief. Back to the public, if anybody has anything else?
Question, what's an MOU?
If you could just come up.
That's all I want to ask.
Is that it? Kelly, could you refresh us?
Memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding. Yeah. John, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I'm just hanging out here, figuring if there's any more.
Sure. Anything else from the public? Seeing none, I will, I'll close public comment, and I will bring it back here to the board. Lynn, I know you said you wanted to wait to hear public comment, curious if, if you had anything else you wanted to add to it, or you're good. Okay.
Jake, I just have one question.
Yep.
I'm not sure who would answer this. What's the percentage of males versus females in these hospitals?
I didn't see that one coming.
I noticed the basketball courts, that's my-
Well, they're also volleyball courts. We, I, I don't have that data at hand, we, we basically think of the world as half male and half female, and our patient population is about the same. We don't anticipate in this unit, in this hospital, having like a mom-baby program, we do have some of those out there, where obviously those are all, those are all females. The units tend to be divided kind of on the hallways by men and women, but we don't have men's-only women or, men's-only units or women's-only units. We, we keep them separated by the hallways, and then operate those units separately based on men down this hall, women down that hall.
You can't say that there's more of one sex than the other, and, and typically?
So, it's interesting, because that, this is, this is information you don't want, it, it changes by age. You tend to see higher utilization of behavioral health services among adolescent girls than adolescent boys, and about equal in adults, and much higher in older adults among women than men, just because women tend to stick around longer than we do.
I'm gonna, and I'm-
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it at that.
No, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Perfect.
I'm just going to add, Mr. Chair, then that's consistent with what we're currently delivering now, which is a diverse population.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Anything else from the board? We've got some waivers we need to work on here, CUP, and then I think we need to make a decision on our application here. So if, if we could go through the waivers?
Do you want to do them as a group, or do-
I think since we did the last one individually, just to keep our practice there the same, we should, we should, we should do the same here.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve waiver number one, in that granting the waiver will not create any substantial detriment to the public.
I have a motion from Lynn.
Second.
Second from Art. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the amendment, the, the, geez, the waiver, excuse me, passes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve waiver number two, with the understanding that the waiver may be granted without substantial detriment to the public.
I have a motion, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second from Jeff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And waiver number two passes.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that the planning board approve waiver number three, with the understanding that approving the waiver will not create substantial detriment to the public good.
Motion, looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Waiver number three passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve waiver number four, in the understa, with the understanding that approving the waiver will not create substantial detriment to the public good.
I have a motion, looking for a second?
Second.
Second from Jeff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the, the waiver passes. All right. We have a CUP on here. I would be looking for a motion for that.
Mr. Chair?
Is there a five?
I have four, four waivers.
Four waivers?
Yeah. What about the tree one?
That was number four.
That was number four. Yes. Okay. Mine says five. All right. Sorry.
We got a printed one.
Thank you. No, not a problem.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant approval of the conditional use permit for approximately 3,300 square feet of wetland buffer impact for the construction of an approximately 89,000-square-foot behavioral health hospital, along with associated site improvements.
A motion from Lynn, looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Also note, the Conservation Division has recommended it.
Thank you. And the CUP is approved. All right. We are down to our site plan here. We do have a recommendation on a continuance. You know, I, I, partially, part of me came in here thinking there was a continuance for this. John, I saw you shaking your head up and down a lot, I, I think you feel comfortable on what was the biggest item on this, this list here. I would like some input for the, from the board, you know, you said you were a little uncomfortable with it, if you want to elaborate more, and then-
Well, I didn't hear from the fire department, or the chief of police, or, you know, the, the council.
Okay.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with that.
Great. Fantastic. I am, I would be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve the site plan.
I have a motion from Lynn, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second from Jeff.
Follows precedent conditions?
Yes. All that good, all the good jazz, and, yeah. All the good jazz inside of our, our staff recommendation.
So that's a conditional approval?
Yep.
Conditional approval.
Yes. I've got a, I've got a second from Jeff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the application is approved. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you. Kelly, thank you for typing in.
Can we take a quick, two or three minutes? Yes. So we're going to, we're going to take a couple minutes to stretch our legs, go to the bathroom, and then we'll be on to the next site plan.
Thank you. See you later.
See ya. Good night.
You're welcome.
Jake, you need to unassign me and- Yes. I can absolutely do that.
What are you doing, erase Tony?
All right, we are going to continue here. I'd like to make a note that Jason is back as a voting member, Mr. D is back as an alternate. Where is my site plan? Here we are. And we are on a public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan and conditional use permit to construct a one-story office and laboratory building, along with associated site improvements. 58 Wentworth Ave, 3 Burton Drive, map 14, lots 44-21, 44-22, Zone Industrial 2, Burton Government LLC is the owner, and Ryan Companies US Inc. is the applicant. And, let me just get my next page here, I gotta go through our memos. I am going to be looking for completeness, and how the board feels on this application for completeness.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, there are two outstanding checklist items. If the board decides to accept the application as complete, these items should be waived for acceptance purposes only. First waiver request, or excuse me, the first outstanding checklist item was, the applicant has not provided utility clearance letters for water services under the application, per checklist item 11.5.1. Second was, the applicant has not provided a plan notes on sheet two to indicate the percent green space per checklist item 4.1H.
Thank you. Board, I'm looking for one way or the other on this, on if we would like to accept this for completing, completeness only, or if we want to-
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we grant the two waivers for acceptance only.
I have a, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jason. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, we will consider this application complete for acceptance purposes only, and those will become a condition of approval. All right, gentlemen?
All right.
The floor is yours.
Jason Lopez.
Oh, I just did that.
That was for the waivers.
You're good.
No, I, the, we did a motion for completeness, to accept them as-
We waived them for completeness.
We waived them for completeness.
Okay, you do all that together?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Gentlemen?
Hope it's clarified.
The floor is yours.
Jason Lopez, Keach Nordstrom Associates. I'm just going to introduce real quick, let Nick speak, and just kind of introduce his role in the project.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jason, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for having me. So my name's Nick Kolk, I'm a construction project executive for Ryan Companies. So Ryan Companies were a, a general contractor, developer headquartered out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. So ultimately, we're a fourth-generation company, been around for about 85 years, and we are the design builder for this project. And so, we felt it was important to make an appearance here tonight. We've had a few virtual, virtual meetings with staff, but we wanted to really come out here so everyone could kind of put a face to the name of Ryan Companies, and a face to the name for the project. So, thanks for having me, Jason. I'll turn it back over to you.
So, you can stay here, or you want to sit back there?
I'll let you answer the hard questions.
I'll call on them if needed. So, as was mentioned, the property is 58 Wentworth Ave and 3 Burton Drive, it's right diagonally across intersection from Stony Field Farms. It is two vacant lots that will be combined into one lot of, creates 7.4 acres. Lots are located in the Industrial 2 zone. They are seeking to develop the site with a 50,900-square-foot office and laboratory building. These are both permitted uses in that zone. In general, the slope of the land slopes to the, to the north, to an existing drainage pond along Burton Drive. We had site, wetlands were flagged, survey-located. Soil mapping was complete, we conducted soil borings across the property. All the wetlands on the property are under a half acre, therefore, no wetland setbacks on site, just the wetland bodies themselves. We did conduct a review of the Natural Heritage Bureau database, and it revealed five threatened and endangered species. Knowing the scope of the project and dealing with alteration of terrain in the Wetlands Bureau, we contracted with GZA and had a wildlife biologist look at the site, and they worked out an agreement with the Hampshire Fish and Game. New Hampshire Fish and Game has issued- New Hampshire Fish and Game has issued their requirements for the project, and we have noted all those on the cover sheet. One of the more complicated species to address was the New England cotton-tail rabbit. Part of that negotiation with Fish and Game, fee will be paid to Fish and Game to cordon off the site prior to development, and they will trap and relocate the rabbits, and the applicant is required to pay that. That fee for that service is gonna be four thousand two hundred and twelve bucks. So, the tenant requirement for this site was a fifty thousand square, fifty thousand nine hundred square foot space, ninety-four parking spaces, includes six electric vehicle parking spaces, and they needed to have an eight-foot-high anti-climb security fence surrounding the facility. The buildings, building will be served by underground utilities. Sewer is served by a gravity system that will connect into Wentworth Ave. Water connection will be made into Wentworth Ave. The water system will supply both domestic and also a fire suppression system. Worked with the fire department for a building connection on the front of the building and also a hydrant located the proper distance from, from that connection. The site will be, will have gated access in communication with the fire department. They have a click-to-enter communication system on their trucks to be able to activate the gate. So, coordination between the tenant's security team and the fire department will take place, so fire department has access in.
Can I stop you real quick?
Yep.
Brian, do you have anything on that?
No, that's why I was saying those are my concerns and any other questions.
Great, thank you, Brian.
Drainage is handled by a closed drainage system leading to a wet pond for mitigation and treatment, and will meet the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services alteration of terrain requirements. That permit has been filed. We have received our first round of comments. We've addressed those comments, and we are awaiting any, any further comment or hopefully a permit soon. The, there are two dumpsters. Kelly, if you could go to the site plan, probably the third sheet then.
Kelly, can you turn that screen on as well, or John, please?
Turn it what?
Or make it so I can show him.
I'll make John notice how to.
It's all right.
Asking the wrong guy.
Is that one of those computer things?
Thank you. Good work, John.
Thank you, John.
No problem.
Learned a new skill today.
Gonna keep me awake.
He's here all night.
That's it. So, look at, looking at the site plan there, you can see the, the building is towards the rear of the property. Off to the right side of the building, out behind the loading docks, we've got two dumpster pads located out there. Those will be the only outside storage on the site. We also have two larger generators off the back, back right corner of the building. There are two loading docks you see on the right side of the building. One is a four-foot dock they'll be able to back up to. The other is a ramp up into the building. The design vehicle for this site is a twenty-six-foot box truck, medium-duty box truck. One truck will be parked on the site out by the loading docks. We have provided three spaces. They do know they will have one truck on site most of the time. Fence that surrounds the property, we're gonna go completely around the entire perimeter except for that northerlymost portion, or looking at the plan, the left side. We've gotta run the fencing in a little bit because of that detention pond that serves Burton Drive. We wanna keep the access open to the town, so they don't need security clearance to get in every time they need to maintain the drainage pond out there. So, that security fence going around the site will be eight-foot high, required to be, I think it was three inches off the ground, anti-climb spikes on the top. And the back portion, there is an internal access gate that's gonna be out by the loading dock. From that gate around counterclockwise to the back right corner of the building, that entire loading dock area, the fence is gonna have solid panel for visibility, blocking visibility. The rest of the fence going around the property is a very fine mesh that you'll be able to see through, but it is a mesh of scale and, and tightness that you can't get your fingers in to climb in, in scale. As I stated, they have a requirement for ninety-four parking spaces. That'll include six spaces for electric vehicles, four ADA spaces. The construction of the building, parking, and the fence will result in the filling of sixteen thousand four hundred seventy-five square feet of wetlands. We have worked with the Wetlands Bureau. We have our comments back. We have three minor comments from the Wetlands Bureau. This project will pay into the Aquatic Resource Mitigation Fund. There is a fee of just shy of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay into that. And we have been to the Conservation Commission, presented the plan, and they have recommended approval as presented. Due to security requirements for the user, landscaping in the parking field and around the parking field needs to be maintained as low shrubbery, ground cover type plants. They can't have anything blocking the view. They need to be able to see from the building out to the street, the access gate, and any tall vegetation would obstruct view. So, we have waiver dealing with landscaping. I think the last couple pages of the, the plan set, we have the architectural renderings. We've got some perspectives there to give you an idea what that building's gonna look like. In essence, it's a, it's a concrete panel building. It is gonna be one-story. There is an internal area that is a vault section. You know, multiple access points around the building. So, with that, we are requesting two waivers for this project. One is for the title block on the architectural and lighting plans. The standard from the architect doesn't comply with London area requirements, so we have that waiver. Then the other waiver is for landscaping. Like I said, no trees, no tall shrubs in or adjacent to the parking lot for visibility and security. So, with that, I will go to the board. If there's specific questions, I will focus on that.
Okay, uh, give me one second here. All right. So, come to the board, see if the board's got any questions on it. I'll go to staff first. John?
Yep. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll go through the waiver requests. The applicant's requesting a waiver to, from section, or from, on the DRC Site Plan Regulation four point oh two relating to the title block location for the building plans and lighting plans. Staff supports the waiver request. Second waiver request is from the Site Plan Regulations three point one zero, point G, point one, three, and three-ten G-three relating to the landscape mitigation in the parking lot, in the parking lots. Staff supports the waiver request as Jason indicated. There's some tenant requirements to, to keep that low, low shrub. Design review items, item number three, the, the application includes two separate lots. They, in order to be consolidated under the volunteering merger, that should occur prior to plan signature. Item four, applicant indicates the New Hampshire DES sewer discharge permit, alteration of terrain permit, wetlands permit, FAA permit, sewer discharge are submitted. The applicant should also submit for and obtain all project permits, indicate the permit approval numbers, and provide copies of the per, permits to the planning department. Item five, the proposed design indicates three retaining walls. Again, they need to, those walls are in excess of three feet in height, which require a design in the building per, and a building permit. The applicant should provide a note on sheet one noting the building permit shall be obtained for any retaining walls. Item six, they are related to the construction details, just the catch basin and the manhole details are mislabeled. They do meet our standards, however, they're mislabeled. Item seven are comments related to the drainage analysis and the, the operation and maintenance plan. Item number eight are related to the traffic information, and I'll go through that a li, in a little more detail. The applicant should verify the DRC comments of the planning department, assessing department, conservation commission, the fire department, and the sewer division have been met. As far as the, the traffic, we'll go back to that. So, again, in this particular instance, again, as I indicated earlier, there's two different criteria. So, again, we typically, we sit down with the applicant, what is the numbers that you, that this is gonna generate? Then again, it either, it's a short traffic analysis or a large traffic analysis. But we always sit down with people. That didn't occur with this one. There's, there's history of, of Harvey Road. If you recall, when Loomis came in, back in nineteen, uh, can't remember when it was, Loomis was circa twenty nineteen, so about five years ago. There were some issues again regarding, you know, trip distribution. Where does the trips, where do these tra, where do these people go to? Where are they coming from? Because again, the impact of, at the intersection of Burton Drive and Harvey Road, then it goes further south to the intersection of Harvey Road and Petengill Road. We never, unfortunately, we never had that, that, that meeting, so that the, the traffic study that was done, they followed the short traffic analysis, but again, we, we always, that's why we stress, we need to sit down and talk about this stuff, so we can always be on the same page. Right now, we're not on the same page as far as the traffic. So, I, I don't know how, how much further I can explain it.
Is, is there a reason for it? Practice, in the past, you know, this year was a, a small generator, didn't trip into a larger traffic full analysis. Provided the short form, form.
But again, one of the bullets of the, the short analysis is we need, we should sit down, so we're all on the same page. Unfortunately, it's, this is what happens.
Yeah, I could really ask you why there was no meeting.
The, we submitted in December. We've come to the point in the construction schedule that we had to go to final. We've had one design review since. Understand there's staff, you know, staffing issues, but it came to the point that we, we needed to go forward with final, final application.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Kelly?
Just to note, Mr. Chair, that in addition to the waivers, you have an exception relating to the driveway width. The regulations allow a gram to thirty-six feet wide for driveways.
Thank you. I will bring this to the board. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? Yeah?
Will we be, will there be any hazmat on the site?
They, yes, they have internal. The tenant, I'm sure most of you already are aware through previous board discussions, is the DEA. So, this is their drug lab, Northern New England Drug, Drug Lab, and national...
That explains the fences.
National fingerprint database. So, it is a closed site, closed to the public, other than those, that's, you know, past security protocol. Those onsite are trained lab technicians to, to deal and process essentially what's confiscated material in, in preparation for, for legal process. So, those onsite are, are trained appropriately.
So, no, no explosives or flammable materials or anything like that?
I, I can't, I can't necessarily speak to, like, flammables or anything like that. They will have, you know, the standard material data sheets for what they have on site and have their protocol in place for, for, for dealing with that. And the building is sprinkled, and they have twenty-four hours, you know, onsite security, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Does the USG have to sign, DEA have to sign off on the plans?
Yes. The DEA right now is working on their hundred percent seminal for construction. So, they're moving oddly fast.
What's your outlook for having them approve that?
Within next week or two, or, or, it, it, there's a couple things hanging out on security that need to be addressed, but their approval should be coming soon. They were looking for, you know, midsummer start.
So, is, so is this a, is this a privately-owned site leased by?
It, it's, yes, it is privately-owned. The Burton governmental LLC is a private entity.
Which is why they're gonna pay taxes.
Right.
Technically, it's not a government building.
Correct.
Thank you.
Then they lease it to GSA.
Government building, the governmental. Chad, I thought I heard you, sounded like you had a question.
Yeah, more specifically, Mr. Trotter, you'd mentioned that the applicant should sit down regarding, because they had a small traffic study. Is it should or shall sit down? Is it a requirement?
It's recommended.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So, right now, again, we're, we're not comfortable with the, the traffic as, as is presented.
Understood. Thank you. Giovanni?
Uh, just to follow up on the traffic. I mean, I know that it's, it's, it's recommended to sit down, but I remember the Loomis site coming in front of us as well, and it's, you know, it's determined that, that Hall Road intersection is a difficult intersection. There's a lot of traffic being produced from the airport, and at the end of the day, I think we all agreed that it was a problem with, you know, the town had to address. So, I'm not sure what you're gonna find any different with...
So, what, what'll it end up doing, Johnny, is again, at least you're, you're gonna figure out what the trip distribution is. So, again, it all goes back to Petengill Road.
But doesn't the minor's traffic study show what's a trip distribution?
It should've. It doesn't. And that's one of the...
Kelly, could, could you bring up the GIS image of, of that site and...
Ju, I, I can tell you that Loomis still uses Hall Road. I live on Hall Road. That is their...
Right, but I remember the whole conversation, and it was at the end of the day, it wasn't Loomis's responsibility to upgrade Hall Road, so it was the town's responsibility.
Can we put a condition on there that there was a no-left-turn lane, put out there? Was there a no-left-turn lane put out there?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, the site, you can see where Kelly has the cursor on Wentworth Ave. That lot's on Wentworth, and just the lot, just to the north, has got frontage on Wentworth and Burton. So, Wentworth is a dead-end road, and Burton is a dead-end road. That's an industrial park. You, you're probably all familiar with Stony Field is. So, that industrial park, all those properties exit Burton out to Harvey. And Harvey, if you could zoom in a little more on the Burton-Harvey intersection, what's existing out there today is we have a dedicated left-hand turn for the left-hand turn movements onto Harvey. We have one lane dedicated, could be straight through to Aviation Park or right onto Harvey. We have one lane dedicated, could be straight through to Aviation Park or right onto Harvey. In terms of the traffic counts, we looked at two, two uses. One was a single-tenant office building. The other use was research and development center. Both are similar in their description of, of the use of what the DEA will use, generate. Weekday, we're looking at the, at the site driveway. We're looking at thirteen vehicles per day, per thousand square feet, fifty percent entering, fifty exiting. Then weekday, AM, PM, we have certain factors. Then we look at that at the gross floor area. So we're looking at a factor of fifty point nine thousand square feet. So weekday vehicle trips is six hundred and sixty-six with three hundred and thirty-three entering, three hundred and thirty-three exiting. Weekday AM peak is ninety-five vehicle trips in the AM, eighty-five entering, ten exiting. PM peak, ninety vehicle trips per hour, fourteen entering, seventy-six exiting. Now, obviously, they're all going to end up to that Burton and Harvey Road intersection. The other one that we looked, so that was for the single-tenant office building. The other one we looked at was research and development center, and that was five hundred and, five hundred and sixty-four vehicle trips per day. In the AM peak, fifty-six with forty-three entering and ten exiting. PM peak, fifty vehicles per hour, eight entering, forty-two exiting. Now with that, both those uses are based on uses that are of public access. So you're going to have public, you know, entering and exiting these sites in, in these, you know, these standard models that were, were used as the example. In the case of this site, the DEA has requested ninety-four parking spaces. This is a closed site, other than those that get through security protocol. So this is not going to be a site where people are coming and going throughout the day. This is primarily going to be the lab technicians and the staff and the fingerprint database center. For truck traffic, part of, one of the STANTEC comments on this was also evaluating truck traffic. You're going to have the common carriers, UPS, FedEx, bringing, you know, I'll call it office supply, not really, lab supply, in and out. You know, so you'll have those common carriers, you know, delivering to the site at random and various times. In terms of truck traffic, they've got the delivery of, of confiscated material that's going to be in the smaller box trucks. And that is going to be, again, very random times, but scheduled through them. This is not a pro, a, a building or a site where we're having tractor trailers coming in with deliveries all the time and picking up stuff and hauling away. This is stuff that's, you know, it's, it's scheduled on, you know, accidents happen as they have material that's coming in, they have transport that comes in, enters the building, exits. So it's not heavily trafficked by truck and, and large trucks. In one of the staff meetings, we were talking about the concern with trucks and trucks taking rights on Harvey entering a residential district. You know, this, these box trucks, they are owned, operated by the DEA, and we can have control over, you know, directional, where they, where they go. Common carriers, FedEx, UPS, we don't have control if they take rights out onto Harvey. So in the end, the overall, when, when I was looking at the total vehicle trips per day for a site of five hundred and sixty-four and six hundred and sixty-six, that is real high. Because again, we have parking for ninety-four staff, and it's not a public access site. So the reality of having that type of traffic generation for this site is, just by their function and security protocol, isn't going to be possible. But if you look at the peak, that, the, the peak AM and PM, that is possible. We're looking at fifty-three in, in the AM and fifty in the PM, and that's in that two-hour window. So, you know, you're going to have office hours, their office hours are set from seven AM to five PM. So they'll be showing up in that peak, they'll be leaving during that peak time. Now, why distribution wasn't included in this was, a lot of times you're able to, you know, sometimes there's published data through Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. They have a lot of traffic counts around the town of Londonderry. And a lot of times, we can turn to that information and, and gather good information. The closest counts were down Harvey, closest to Petengale, but those were over five years old, and there's no, there was no distribution. So it was just a total count at this location. It doesn't tell you how many north, how many south. So to take distribution of what we could anticipate at Harvey Road, if we had on Harvey Road, you know, how many vehicles in the peak hour driving north and how many driving south, we could take a, a ratio, a percentage, and apply that to our trips out. So if it was fifty north, fifty percent north, fifty percent, you know, south, and we have fifty cars going out to the Harvey Road intersection, you would apply twenty-five turn left, twenty-five turn right, based on those ratios. But the data that was collected is not only outdated, but it also does not have that distributional north-south. So you can't apply that information. The only way we'd be able to generate that is through other record, you know, applications or, or conducting counts.
Sure. Thank you. Chad?
You might have already addressed this, but one shift, nine to five, roughly nine to five, not twenty-four hours to include lab workers in deliveries?
Uh, one, one shift, but there will be twenty, you know, there may be people that work outside those shift hours. But it's a one-shift operation and staff twenty-four seven with, with security.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'll let you guys go before I talk. Go.
So will there be any material disposal activities happening onsite?
Material is taken, there's no incinerator on site. Materials are processed, packaged, and brought off-site for destruction.
Perfect. Thanks.
Mr. De.
So I need to ask Giovanni a question.
Sure. Absolutely.
So you gave a previous example. Were you trying to say, if we make this applicant do a more expanded traffic study, what difference does it make because we can't do anything about it anyway?
Yeah.
What you were trying to say?
John, what difference does it make?
I disagree, because again, the Loomis site indicated that, that there was need for, the necessity for turning lanes on Harvey Road, both into Burton Drive as well as Aviation Park Drive.
And we, and we have the ability to, to have the applicant pay for that kind of stuff?
Well, again, if there's an impact, yep. You know, and again, if, if what Jason just recited, then this is junk. You know, that's why we sit down and, and we talk about where, where, where do you get the, the data? It's because I disagree, that data is not, is newer than five years old. Southern New Hampshire Planning is always out there doing traffic counts.
Thank you.
So.
I think if this was a manufacturing facility that had tractor trailers coming into it and all that, I, I would be more hesitant about it, but I, I'm not seeing, two things. I'm not really seeing the issue with traffic. I can't see it. They've got under a hundred parking spots. There's going to be very little amount of actual heavy truck traffic to the site. So I, personally, I just don't see the, to your point, we already know what could happen, why are we doing it again? I, I just don't see it. Again, if this was a manufacturing facility that tractor trailers were coming in and out of every day, I'd agree wholeheartedly and say, all right, we really got to look at this here, but it's not. You know, you, you said, based off your traffic study, that there's five hundred and fifty-five anticipated trips in and out. You don't even have a hundred parking spots. You're never going to reach five hundred and fifty-five. It's a one-shift business. It's not, with the exception of, you know, a handful of security that's there overnight. I just don't see it. I, I absolutely agree with, and, and you have, you would have control over it, is conditioning any truck traffic to, that is coming to this facility, these box trucks that are delivering stuff, do not turn right out of there and they have to go left. I think that's a fair condition. You know, we, we did something similar at Loomis where all the truck traffic is supposed to be turning right. Whether they are or not, again, that's out of the planning board and that's, that's the code enforcement. But personally, I just, I don't know. I, I can't see the issue here with, with what's there for traffic. I mean, there's not going to be, it's just not going to be.
So, so, so as I, as we're talking about a leasehold building, that could change use. My understanding is when we have a change of use, then we open it all up again, and we have a chance to revisit traffic at that time. If it, if it does turn into manufacturing, if it turns into whatever, we can, we have a, we have a second bite of the apple, as it were, so.
I'd probably ask the applicant, how long is your, your lease term?
That's what I was just asking, Nick. It's twenty years.
So, yeah, hopefully that-
Wouldn't be the first government agency to walk away and pay the remainder of the twenty, and then the owner of this, of the site gets, gets double payments.
Yeah, this one's-
But I'm just saying, it's, wouldn't be the first time it happened. We're all aware of that, so.
Yeah, this one does have-
My comment is, we get, we get to open it up again.
Yeah, and revisit. If there's a change of use, it's coming. Exactly.
Regardless of ownership?
Correct. Absolutely. Absolutely. So, I just, I don't see it. You know, I think it's fair to condition the fact that no truck traffic should be turning right out of there. You know, I don't know if we can put that as truck traffic in general coming out of Burton Drive, if we can do something similar with, with putting a sign that says, you know, "Commercial trucks left only." I'd love to see that. I know that, that's been a, a huge issue in the past. So I think putting a sign out there and something that we could enforce might help out a little bit.
Can we make that a condition, that the applicant needs to-
He did across the street, you know? We certainly did across the street.
It's, it's on their driveway coming out of, out of their site onto Aviation Park Drive.
Oh, see, I was wanting it on Aviation. When, when we did it, I was under the impression that was on Aviation Park Drive-
No.
-at Harvey Road, that they are not to turn left out of there.
No, because again- It has to be within their site.
It has to be within their site plan. So, well, then that's kind of a, if they didn't know that when we approved the last one, I would have had some opinion.
Yeah, I know. It's the past. My biggest concern, to be honest with you, is it looks really tight in the back corner.
Does fire department have anything with turning around back there? That's the only thing that sticks out to me in, in this site plan is, it seems tight back there, and can your truck make it? The little tiny one. Yeah, because he was talking about a twenty-six foot truck, you know?
Looking at the site plan, the way we come in, there isn't enough travel distance. If we do pull a truck in, then we wouldn't be able to back it out. If you go into the second fenced area where the box trucks will be, there is enough space to turn our apparatus around in there.
Great.
I got a question. Brian, have they consulted with you at all as far as hazardous materials?
They have not, as of yet, right now. It's just been site planned.
Okay.
Yeah, I would assume that comes a little bit later.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Thanks.
Anything from the board? I, I think we should, we should move, move forward here, open it up to the public.
I was going to say Heritage Commission didn't have much say in the design of the building because of being a governmental entity. As far as landscaping, they had some comments on that. Basically, what you see is, was, was okay with them because it is very, they're very limited in what they would do.
I'll let you go before I do it.
Talking about what we had talked about earlier, where, you know, traffic for one project, you know, looking at things like, sort of myopically versus holistically, my only concern with not having this traffic meeting is, it's one piece of the equation that we don't necessarily have insight into, into a rapidly developing part of the town. You know, and so if we don't have that real accurate assessment of just what this traffic is, and then something is built next to it, and then something is built across the street from it and everything else, without having all of these pieces in place, are we kind of setting ourselves up for an issue further down the line?
To that, somebody correct me if I'm wrong here. The traffic study that they've provided, this short study versus a long study, is actually showing theoretically five times the amount of traffic that is going to come to the site. Am I wrong about that?
For total count vehicle trips to the site, but the peak AM and peak A, PM hours-
Are realistic.
Are, are realistic, yes. Yeah.
So again, and you keep talking about truck traffic. Have you ever been on Harvey Road in the morning?
Oh, I sure have.
There you go. So again, to Jason's point, and to my point, this should be right. This should be reflected correctly. Because when we're doing a whole traffic study analysis, we need to rely on this stuff too, or we pay somebody else to go back through it and to correct it.
What more are you looking?
So this to reflect what's actually happened right there and follow the regulations.
So you're saying that when you go to eventually do some off-site improvements on Harvey Road or Hall Road or what have you, you don't do your own independent traffic study?
We do, we'll do existing counts, but again, this should reflect what was proposed out there, just similar to what we have for Stony Field Farms, what we have for Loomis.
But wouldn't your traffic study you do to, and eventually do the work, be more accurate than anything that you could piece together in old documents?
But this is, this is what the, these, this is what those sites generated. So it's similar to the study that we're looking at now for the whole, full build of Petengale Road, that's what we're doing. So right now, we've taken a wild guess of what could be coming in. This site was never even, we never envisioned this one when we did the, the initial study back in November.
Yeah, I'm just saying that your, your data is going to be more current when you actually get to that point than putting together all the old traffic studies from different site plans over the years. So.
All right. I am going to open this up to the public. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board here. I, I think we've gone over this pretty well. I think we should start looking at waivers and how the board wants to vote on all this. Let me get here. If we want to take the waivers, this is the wrong one. If we want to take the waivers in which we have so far today, actually, there are none on this that don't have a recommendation, so I would take all, I would take both the waivers at once.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve waivers number one and two in staff's memorandum, with the understanding that granting both waivers, both waivers will not create substantial detriment to the public good.
I have a motion. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second, second from our, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're not opposed, the waivers have been approved. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
I'd like to motion that we grant a conditional use permit to allow a permitted use in the Conservation Overlay District and denote that Conservation has recommended approval of this.
Motion by Art, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Chad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The conditional use permit is approved and we are looking for a motion on how we want to move on the site plan.
Could you acknowledge the section as well, Mr. Chair?
Say that again.
The exception request. Are you...
With the driveway?
I'm sorry, with the driveway.
Oh, yes, I will acknowledge the request for the with the driveway, that's fine, absolutely. Alright, how's the board want to go on this?
I'm going to follow what staff has recommended, at least have some idea of what we have for traffic out there. Does that all help?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this application to allow the applicant sufficient time to work out the traffic details with staff.
I've got a motion from Lynn, looking for a second.
Second.
Second from Jeff.
Continuous date?
This will be continued to the, Kelly, you want to do June 12th?
To the board?
Board, do you want to do the first meeting or the second meeting?
I'm happy to do the first meeting.
First meeting is June 5th.
June 5th.
Yep.
So we will make a motion to continue this to the June 5th. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If your votes in the affirmative, we'll see you in a month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Anyone here for the last one?
Get the group whittled down.
Alright, we have a public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan to construct a natural gas metering and regulation station along with site improvements at 104 Harvey Road, map 14 lot 12, Zoned Industrial 2, City of Manchester. Manchester, Boston Regional Airport is the owner and Liberty Utilities is the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff recommends the board vote to accept the application as it is substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction and allow the board to make any informed decisions.
Fantastic, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion that we approve the application as complete.
Motion from Art.
Second.
Second from Jeff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is accepted as complete. Alright, gentlemen, oh, you're still here. Congratulations.
A good engineer.
Round two.
Alright, go ahead, gentlemen.
Jason Lopez, Keach Nordstrom Associates, joined by, joined with here Brian Frost from Liberty Utilities. I'll let Brian talk about what they're doing first and then I'll get into more of the technical, technical items.
Sure.
Yeah, Brian Frost, Liberty Utilities, New Hampshire, Liberty's New Hampshire operation, my office is in Manchester. This project, for the past 20 years, Liberty's had a pipeline from Sanborn Road. It goes adjacent to the site on the utility corridor, the old trolley line. And then it goes out on Pettingill and goes down to the power plant area primarily serving that. This site would tap, put an additional tap on that pipeline because that pipeline operates at an operating pressure that's not suitable for what, you know, normal houses and businesses use gas at. So it would reduce the pressure, just like you have pressure boosting in water networks or substations in electric. It'd be that type of facility out there. Provide increased gas reinforcement due to growth in the area of usage.
Sounds thrilling.
That's my job. As then it's 19 years these days being involved with it, so.
What's required for maintenance on this facility?
What's required for maintenance? It's a great question. We, this is not going to be a manned facility, meaning an office for Liberty personnel or an occupied site like, you know, a manufacturing or office. But it is continuously monitored, all of the equipment. We have computer electronic gauges in security to the buildings that are continuously monitored by our gas operating center in London Dairy. And then we'd visit the site in a minimum once a month. That's what we visit these types of sites. Do an in-person survey of the equipment and facility, make sure that the fence line is secure. Then at least once per year, the work can be spread out. I authored a traffic, traffic has been a concern tonight, authored a traffic letter because this isn't a, something that you could look up in the Institute of Traffic Engineers handbook, what our actual use is. Approximately six days per year, we'd have people out there.
Oh, you're going to need to have a left-hand turn sign then.
We did put a driveway.
Sorry, my meds are wearing off.
That's a good, one of our, one of the design choices in the site was to have a driveway and a small parking area to allow our workers instead of, we do have sites that are constrained in the company where they got to drive the service van and just park alongside the road. This allows, pull the service van off the road, turn it around inside the site, exit with no backing out there. So that's kind of what the traffic and how often somebody be out there. No permit, the lighting there is switch-operated lighting. Liberty wouldn't be typically out there at night unless we got some type of monitoring alarm that necessitated a nighttime response. So we do have lights that are fixed to the building that the workers can turn on with a switch inside the door if they need to. But we're not trying to like draw attention to the site, rather monitor it through the security system.
Johnny, Kelly, you guys have anything?
Brian, is the site similar to the site on Sanborn Road?
Yes.
For those of you that know the site on Sanborn?
Yep.
That's very similar.
Great, Kelly?
All set, Mr. Chair?
Anything from the board? Open it up to the public. There's no public, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
A question on the landscaping, you have white pine and white pine tends to lose its lower branches. Certain species that does retain in some degree.
Can I close public comment real quick?
Yes.
Thank you. Pretty close public comment, alright, alright, go ahead.
It'd be quick then, just pull it away so we can get on to business here. So, concerned about that and then also between your facility and the rail trail. What is there for, you know, at least keeping the vegetation there?
Kelly, would you be able to go to the aerial on that site? GIS?
And the third thing is no purple lilac there.
Yeah, no purple lilac. You know, with the landscaping, the, yeah, so you... Yeah, that is not the rail trail, what you see right next to the lot. Rail trail is in the tree line that, yeah, yep. So, we will be removing trees up to the property line for construction of stormwater and installation of the fence. But you've got that little triangular piece that's vegetated between the rail trail and this site. There'll be a little bit of trees over the property line in the Eversource property right there. But Eversource has the right to cut all those down around their lines anytime they see fit. So, can't guarantee that those would stay. Couple other real quick things, you know, Point 80 acre lot did require a special exception to put this use on this lot. They received that special exception back July 19th, 2023. There is no water or sewer connection to either of these buildings. The communication and electric are in design by the respective utilities. Do require a town driveway permit and town stormwater discharge permit. There are no wetlands on the site, we did meet with CONCOM, they didn't have any issues. There are three buildings on the site. The buildings are, one of them is going to be 62 by 35, pre-engineered steel building, metal siding, low slope, standard metal roof. Another building 30 by 25, same construction. And actually, Kelly, could you go to the site plan, I think it's the third sheet? One more. There you go. So the larger building, then there's a small building on the lower part of the sheet. That's eight by eight concrete.
Fiber glass.
Yeah, yeah. So, presented to Heritage, there was no...
The larger buildings are essentially going to look like the neighboring building, the contracting company. Same, similar color gray, just like the neighbor.
Any outside storage?
What's that?
Any outside storage?
No, eight-foot-high security fence going around it, chain link, barbed wire on the top, couple man gates on the back side, left side, or the north side there. You know, gated access, again, worked with the fire department, they wanted Knox box, so we'll have that. Three spaces provided interior. The entire interior perimeter will, except for the detention pond, is all going to be a stone surface that minimizes the amount of trips they need to make out there for cutting the lawn and maintenance. So the whole idea is to keep no vegetation on the interior of the fence line except for the grass in the detention pond. And then we wanted to keep the frontage in front of that gate area open from no vegetation. So drive-by windshield, survey of the site just can show site security. And we were looking at putting the white pines or we can substitute something else down that southerly property line or as you look at it on the low side, just to give some buffer to the butter.
Kelly, can you go to page seven real quick?
What's the distance from there?
No.
Eighty feet.
Say that again, sir?
Eighty feet.
So for, to Mr. Rog's comment, eighty feet, can you put a row of 13 arborvitae there? Green giant arborvitae.
Yep.
Perfect.
Jake's the expert on landscaping.
Don't know a thing about it.
I actually appreciate it because, I mean, Liberty isn't an expert on landscaping and we're happy to spec out
Perfect.
whatever's going to fit with the character.
Perfect. Anything else from the board? Fantastic. Ann?
What about the vet stone?
What?
The vet stone.
We really don't know what that is.
I can check it out.
So I contacted a archaeological company early on in that process of doing the site survey. We don't know what it is. I sent him pictures, he sent it around to some of his colleagues. We don't know.
What's the shape of the stone?
Square, what about this big square?
Rectangular and just has vet on it. And no, no, you know, because I don't know what it is. So I reached out to him and he didn't have, none of his colleagues have seen anything like that either. So we kept 25 feet away from it. We don't know what it is. It didn't, it's away from what we're developing. So, worst-case scenario, we meet the setback for, you know, grave sites is what we were, worst-case scenario looking at. So keep 25 feet away from it because no one had an answer.
My research, when that came up to me as a project engineer, I did a fair amount of looking around at old records of London Dairy. At one point, there was a residential house there, I believe, that was demolished. And that's, and then there was a trolley line.
Yeah, the trolley went right through.
A street trolley in the, up until, was it?
Manchester Dairy.
Okay, I think we have enough information here to start making some moves on waivers and make a motion. We have got two waivers to work on. They're both supported, so I would entertain taking a motion on both of them at once.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve waivers number one and two with the understanding that granting the waivers will not create substantial detriment to the public good.
Motion from Lynn.
Second.
Second from Art, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any waivers are granted? Alright, I am looking for a motion to accept or approve, I'm looking for a motion to grant conditional approval of a site plan to construct a natural gas metering and regulation station along with site improvements at 104 Harvey Road.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Fantastic.
Are you writing a condition to add arborvitae on the southerly side of the parcel?
What would I do without you? Thank you very much. If we could add that to our motion that we're changing our landscape plan to reflect 13 arborvitae on the, I think that's the southern, southerly side of the parcel.
I'll make it as part of the motion.
Fantastic, so we had a second? Still have a second?
I will include that as part of my second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have an approved site plan? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good time tonight.
Thank you very much.
We might make it out before midnight.
We do have a conversation on rules of procedure. I'd be open to talking about it next week.
Yeah.
Fantastic. I do have a comment though, Mr. Chair. Comment away. I would like to make note that tonight's planning board meeting afforded four different times for public comment. Thank you. Yes, it did. Absolutely, thank you very much. You're welcome. So I'm going to move that, we don't need a motion on that. So I will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
The move.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Everybody.
Everybody, thank you. We are adjourned, have a good night, folks.